Okay, good evening, council. This evening, we have four agenda items. First, we're going to talk trash. Then, we're going to talk about urban renewal. We have our discretionary elements with regard to 2015 budget to finish off that process. And then, also talking about the downtown outdoor display ordinance and where we are with some data on that. And so, beginning this evening, we have Devin Granberry. He's from the city of Sheridan. He's the city manager there, relatively new, so welcome and welcome.
I'm still trying to get away with the new tag. Yeah, it'll be three years in December, so I don't know if I can do it anymore.
I always say relatively new. First time in front of this group. We have our name tags in front of you, in front of us, Devin. But appreciate your coming. And, you know, real quick background for folks is that Sheridan went through a selection process to narrow down who's coming in and doing the residential trash service. And Devin's going to share with us some of what they went through and their experience.
I'm happy to, and thanks for having me.
And I'll just mention one thing. Devin, make sure you pulled the microphone close enough to you.
Oh, you bet. I'll get it up here. There we go.
Thank you.
You bet. And just a little additional background, we just rolled out in June. So, we're not even four months in, and so, we're still learning a lot right now. But as Michael asked me, I talked process and the things that we went through and some of the lessons learned with that. I also spoke with Mike, and he gave me some suggestions of some things that you guys were possibly looking for. And one of the questions is why? Why did Sheridan decide that you wanted to do that? And I found a letter that we gave to everybody in the city that came from our mayor. And it's kind of just a nice bullet point summary of some of the reasons why Sheridan wanted to do that. And we were looking at issues of cleaner neighborhood appearance, promotion of recycling, trying to negotiate cheaper costs for our citizens, trying to minimize wear and tear, having one delivery day, all those normal types of things I'm sure you guys have considered as well. The process that we went through, and most of the process is really spelled out in state statute on what you need to do. Our experience has been that from the time that you decide that you might want to say "go" on this, it's probably at least 10 months to a year for the entire process at that point. Most of that is a six-month waiting period that's built into state statute, or I shouldn't say waiting period, but notification period. So, under the statute, you have to give notice to all the haulers that operate in your city, six months' notice that you're considering going to either a contract, or a district, or a franchise, or there's several options out there. But you have to notify all, I think what the statute says is licensed haulers in your city. What we did is we pulled the phone book out, and I sent notice to everybody basically in the phone book, just to make sure that you're covering everybody. You send it to everyone that's licensed the haul, and then everybody else that you can think of, just to make sure you don't have a problem with somebody coming back at a later point saying, "We were never notified." So, once you do that, you got a six-month period that goes on. We use that process then to work with a consultant to work on our RFP and the scope of services that would be in that RFP, and also begin a basic contract draft. We had decided that the council wanted to go with a contract route. You can do several different things. Contracting seems to be the most popular out there from the other cities that we met with before we did this. There's also licensing you can do, which most of us already kind of do some form of licensing, but you can beef that up if you want. You can do an ordinance, and through an ordinance process, you can do things such as mandating pay-as-you-throw or curbside recycling. You can work those types of services that you would like to see provided into an ordinance and then enforce that on any carriers in your area. You can do an RFP in contract, which is again what we decided to do. You can do special improvement districts, and you can set up districts and have those districts then govern and how you want to do collections, either through, again, a contract usually, contractual arrangement at that point as well. You can do a franchise. Technically, I think you can do a franchise. However, there are several cities and city attorneys in the area that are not sure if that's legal under Colorado law. Fort Collins, I believe, was looking at doing a franchise, but kind of backed away from it after they got an opinion from their city attorney that they didn't think it would be legal. I don't know a whole lot about that. And I'm not aware of anybody franchising in Colorado. However, there are numerous municipalities, I believe, out east that do franchising arrangements with their haulers out there. Or you can municipalize. Take the service over as a municipal service. It's pretty much the same process through the statute, a six-month notice, and then going through the notifications and then allowing people to bid on those. So, when we did, let's see, so our council went through, decided what were our priorities that they wanted to accomplish, which of those kind of options were the best to try and accomplish, to reach those priorities, and decided to do a contract and decided to contract with a single hauler for the entire city. We considered splitting the city in half and putting out one half of the city to bid and the other half to bid, possibly looking at two different providers, or it could be one if you got a good enough proposal on that. We elected eventually, I think we were not quite big enough to be able to split up the service and make it economically viable for somebody to come in and give us a decent proposal on that. So, we decided to keep it together as one. We have about, it ended up being right around 2,000 residences that we have now as customers under this. So, I don't know if that, that takes two days for our hauler to do. And I don't know if the math then applies across, and you can kind of get an idea if that works for you guys or not, or how big of divisions that you might possibly be looking at. But we are all in one carrier, Republic Services, on two collection days right now.
And Devin, can you talk about the, you know, the voice from above?
Yeah.
I saw you do that. Can you talk about what that customer base looks like? Single-family homes? What did you do on multi-families?
Right. So, under the statute...
Would you exclude?
Sure. Under the statute, you may include all single-family homes. You may include multifamily buildings that are seven units or less, seven units or fewer. Statue says, once you get to a multifamily building that has eight units or more, then they, I guess they could always opt in if they wanted to, but they are, under statute, excluded from the provisions or the mandatory provisions of the services you would provide it. Commercial properties may not be included. Industrial properties may not be included. So, only, only properties that are deemed to be single-family residential or multifamily of seven units or less, and again, that's according to state statute. Some municipalities will also opt or allow to opt out HOAs, to opt out, because oftentimes HOAs will have an existing contract with a hauler, often a multi-year contract, and they will, it's kind of a gray area in the law, but they will allow HOAs to opt out of the city mandated service as well. We've had, we have very few of those. We have a handful of those and a couple other folks that had contracts for shared services and dumpsters, and we kind of worked around that with them as well. Did I cover that for you, Michael? What you wanted to... Okay. Let's see. In our, in our process, I'll touch on just a little bit more. After the six-month notice, or included in the six-month notice, we asked for intent-to-bid letters back from those folks that might be interested. So, we had an idea about how many haulers might be interested in that. At that time, we got, it was either six or seven, I can't recall at the moment, intent-to-bid letters back. And as I said, over that six-month period, we were working on the RFP and getting it ready to go out. We worked with a consultant. We used Lisa Schumatz. Her company is Sera, S-E-R-A, which is Schumatz Economic Research Associates, I believe. She's out of Boulder. She also happens to be a board member on the town of Superior and is fairly well-recognized, not only in Colorado, but across the nation, does a lot of work for states and other municipalities around the area, has done numerous RFPs and other consulting work for several municipalities in Colorado. She helped us with going through and helping the council to prioritize, what do you want to accomplish out of this? Do you want to, do you want to push recycling? What kind of recycling? Single-stream recycling? Those types of questions. Do you want to have it be a cart service? Do you want different types? Do you want to have mandatory, or some, or particular landfill requirements built into your contract? Really delving into some of the priorities and details that we weren't thinking of off the top of the bat, but need to be included when you're putting together your scope. So, she helped us with that, helped us with, again, developing our scope. Our RFP helped and assisted the city with evaluating proposals that we received, and then also helped with some initial drafts of the contract that we ended up with Republic. Found it to be very helpful. They have a lot of, had a lot of market data that could kind of tell you where bids were coming in and if they were seeing that as being reasonable compared to what they were seeing in other municipalities. And I'll, and I'll touch real quick on trying to get an idea on prices. It's very, very tough to get a good comparison or get apples-apples feel for what the different haulers out there are charging. Because waste management, you may have waste management, and I'm paying them, I'm paying them 20 bucks a month, while your neighbor has waste management too, but they're paying them 35 bucks a month. So, it's really, really tough to get a feel for, okay, where are all of our haulers? Because they tend to be all across the board. If you call up and ask them, don't tell them you're a city, because they won't breathe a word to you. That was the other help that the consultant helped out with. They made some cold calls and called up some of these haulers and said, "Hey, I'm a new resident in Sheridan. I'm looking to get pricing for trash service." And so, they helped us with some of that as well. But it's really tough to say, "Hey, we're going to get, we're going to get a contract in place with this hauler and these prices, and it's going to save everybody in the community this amount of money." Because it's just, there's just too much variables going on with who's charging what out there right now. Let's see.
Do you have a sense, just in a, generally, that the arrangement you guys entered into probably does save people a fair chunk of money?
Yeah, I, again, it's a, it's a little hard to say, but we have a scope of services that goes everywhere, or a, yeah, a scope that can go from a low of $6 a month up to a high of $19.97 a month. And there's three, three levels in between there. So, we have had people come in and say, "I'm saving, I'm now saving $130 a year on almost the same service, if not a better service, because it includes recycling, it includes curbside service, it includes bulk pickups and yard waste pickups and e-recycling and all those kind of things." As you guys are very used to, those, the folks that are really happy aren't the ones that are ringing my phone all day long. But I know they're out there, and they've come in and said that they were, that they've been pleased with the service to this point in that it has saved them money. I've had, I've had calls from folks saying, you know, "This is more, this is costing me more. I don't want the service." A lot of that, what we ran into in Sheridan is we found a lot, I don't know, I should say a lot. We found instances where, where people on a block were sharing a trash service and splitting the cost among them. So, once you start then to more equitably spread that service cost across and down that street, and those folks that were, are now individually paying, and they're a little bit upset about that. But again, going to the goals that we are trying to accomplish, that's one of the things that if you're going to make, if you're going to reach those goals and trying to get there, you've got to have that, that equality of payment across the board from everybody involved with it. So, we had folks that were doing that, that were a little bit upset, and those were the folks that are primarily saying, "Well, you know, it was costing me $8 a month," or something like that. Well, they were sharing with three other people. That's why it was costing them $8 a month, and now they can't do that. So, but I'd say for the most part, we were, we were fairly, if I kind of smushed it all together, it was in the middle of the range.
Can you talk about how you're handling the billing?
Handling what?
The billing.
Billing. So, that'll be a big question on what you want to do. Do you want to do the billing, or do you want to have that as part of your, your service provision? We are not, Sheridan is only set up to do, we do a couple of annual bills with some stormwater and things, so we're not set up, neither do we have, we don't have the staff to do a monthly or quarterly billing operation. So, we built that into our contract, and we have Republic Services do the billing for the city. That's nice in that they handle all the customer service, all the billing questions, all those types of things. The flip side and the downside of that is that adds into the cost for your customers. So, that has to be covered in your contract, and it has to be covered in the rates that they charge. So, if you're able, through your provisions with the city here, to be able to absorb a take-on billing here, then that can be a cost-saving for your, your customers in that you don't have, then whoever you work with doesn't have to build that into their rates to cover the, the cost of billing for the customers. So, it's a consideration that you'll want to decide what you want to do there. But it was, it was a pretty easy decision for us, because we were just not set up to do that. If we were, if we had a water utility, we had something else where we were already set up to do those types of either monthly or quarterly bills, I think it would have been a different consideration for us, just mainly because we would have saved, we would have been able to lower the rates just a little bit more. I was asked, what, what are some of the issues that we've had, citizen issues? Probably the biggest pushback I got were just from folks saying, "You can't tell me who I can do business with." It wasn't necessarily cost. It was really more of a city coming in and telling them, or they felt like the city coming in telling them who that they, who they would use for trash. And they weren't pleased about that. We, also, I touched on the trash sharing issues that we have. We had a little bit of folks that, again, it's related to trash sharing, saying, "I don't need the service. I don't, I don't generate the trash. I take it to my employer. I do whatever with it." Kind of the same type of issue. A smaller issue is existing contracts, so when you're going to roll this out, there's no good time to roll it out, because people are going to be entered into contracts, whoever they may have, throughout the year. So, whenever you move in, I move into Littleton, I call up Waste Management, I sign up for a year in February, on a February to February, my neighbors on July to July. So, there's no really good time that you can, you can find when you're going to be able to minimize the, the contract conflicts that you'll have. However, we did some outreach with all the other haulers, and most of them were very, very good to work with and worked with their existing customers to rebate whatever portion of an existing, either quarterly or yearly contract that they had with the customers that had to switch over to Republic, and refund those out, come and collect the cans, do all those kind of things like that. So, most of the haulers have been pretty good with that. We still have a handful that we have some issues that we're trying to deal with them on that. Extra trash, one of the things you'll have to determine, and our council was looking at, one of the options that you can do is, is you can do bag, pay-as-you-throw and bag, tag your bags. So, you have tags, and you put them on a bag, and you can put out as many bags as you want, as long as you got the tags on them, and the carrier will pick them up. Our council decided they wanted to go with a cart service and, and have a provision that required all of the trash be contained within the carts. We will not collect bags that are on the side unless that customer makes a special call or bulk pickup call to Republic, and there's an extra charge that goes associated with that. It's usually somewhere anywhere from $3 to $20, depending on what it is. That is a little bit of a change. A lot of people, at least in Sheridan, were used to working with companies where they could throw as much as they wanted out all the time, and they'd come and pick it up. That's one of our challenges, which we're still working with. We have overflow trash, especially in the multifamily units. We have a number of multifamily units that are still, that seven units or under. They can generate quite a bit of trash. Trying to get that all taken care of has been a bit of a challenge, so we're still working on, on that piece as well. That's been an issue. But the council decided they want to go the cart route, wanted to acquire the trash to be in there, because again, they're trying to improve the appearance of the communities and the streets, and trying to cut down on having trash out in the streets or out on the sidewalks all the time. Couple other things, I think I've touched on most everything else. I do recommend that you, you work with a consultant, because they're going to ask some of the questions you're just not going to think of to ask. They have some technical expertise, especially when you're negotiating what type of recycling services do you want to include in your, in your contract? What type of, or when you're, you're working out service cost escalators, are you going to include provisions for gas prices, or are you not? Different things that they were very helpful in, in working through with us. We touched on the billing question, we touched on the time, about 10 to 12 months. Some of my lessons learned have been, make sure you just get plenty of time and plenty of notice. I really think we rushed it a little bit, ended up rushing a little bit in Sheridan. Allow your people plenty of time to sign up for the new service, to learn of the new service, to call up and ask questions about it, and then to get signed up. We put out multiple notices, not only from the city, but from Republic. I think I put it, I think I had it in, we have a monthly newsletter, I think I had it on the front page of the monthly newsletter for eight months running, and we still had folks that were, "What, what is this? What's this can doing in my driveway right now?" Once they started to get delivered. So, make sure you give yourself just plenty of time. Again, I think, my personal opinion, we rushed it a little bit. Make sure you have adequate staffing, either in-house or with a consultant to handle at least the first couple of months of the rollout. You will, your phone will ring off the hook. And that's one of the issues we had to address with Republic. I think they underestimated how much, how many questions there would be in the rollout, and were understaffed on their customer service side to handle some of our questions. We got it addressed, but that's something that needs to be, you need to have a good staff, or good, or the consultant needs to be really staffed up that can handle it for a good two or three months for the questions you'll get. And then, every city, we went and talked, before we rolled out, we talked to Golden and Lewisville and Lafayette and Edgewater, almost everyone we could talk to, and they all pretty much said the same thing. The first year is rocky. The first year is tough to get through. Again, we're in our first quarter. We just got our first quarterly bill out, and, oh my. It's been, it's been a little, a little bit rough, but as long as you guys kind of know coming in that there's going to be this amount of pushback, you know, there's going to be some pushback no matter what. The rollout is not going to go perfect. It's going to be rocky. The first year is going to be a little bit tough. But then, in speaking with other municipalities that had it in place for a while, as, as, as everything, people get used to it, and it starts to become the new normal, and, and things ease off and get a little bit easier. So, the other thing I wanted to touch on, and has been one of our bigger selling points, I think, with this project, and I forgot to mention it, we have a five-year contract, and I think it's one of the best benefits for our customers in the city. Under the contract, Republic must hold their rates steady for the first two years of the contract, so they may not raise rates for the first two years. The third and fourth years, they are allowed in inflation with a cap of 3% each year, and it's based on a, on a formula that takes into consideration the Denver Boulder Consumer Price Index, and one or two other things that escaped me right now. I apologize. I'd be happy to share that with you guys. And then, the fifth year is a renegotiation year. So, we, the council will evaluate where we are with that, if they want to continue, do they want to bid it out, and those kind of things as well. But one of the big complaints that we'd been getting in Sheridan was that we had a number of haulers in there. People would sign up at a cut rate. Somebody'd come by their door, knock on their door, and say, "Hey, I'll, I'll collect you, I'll set you up for, you know, nine bucks a month," or something like that. And they'd go through six months of service or 12 months of service, and they'd come back, and all of a sudden, their bill would jump 100%, 200%, something along those lines with some of them. Even the larger companies, we were seeing pretty large increases from waste management for folks. So, that's been one of our bigger selling points, is that, look, we'll have some price stability for you, we'll be able to keep the prices steady for several years. I think with our formula, if it had been in place for this year, the increase would have been 2.7%. So, that's pretty good, I feel. So, that, that's been one of our, at least that's been one of the points I talk up with folks that have called up and had questions about it. folks that have called up and had questions about it. Yeah, I'll answer questions. I'm babbling now. So I'd be happy to answer questions that you guys might have.
Bruce?
Thanks for spending the time with us on this.
You bet.
We're really talking trash here. What about illegal dumping and scofflaws, you know, houses that don't participate and then dump, dump in a community, dump down in a multifamily or, you know, those kinds of things that are just going to be part of the process? What was your experience?
We haven't had too much of that at this point. We had, actually, we had some numbers I'll share with you, just to give you an idea. And again, this is our, our first quarter operation, so it's a little bit hard to get a feel for it. But we had, when the first bills came out, we had 251 customers that were scheduled for a turnoff for non-payment. As soon as they realized that this was for real and it was, and, and the city was serious about this and it wasn't just some fly-by-night thing, that dropped down, I think we're under 100 right now.
So what would the turnoff have been? What was the penalty that they were?
They would have been sent, actually, since the city doesn't do the collections, we let, we allow Republic to handle that. Republic would have a, a fee to get the service turned back on. I can't remember that, what that is off the top of my head. If that continues, that they refuse to pay service, it goes to collections, just like any other time that you have a, a bill that you don't pay and, and ends up going to collections. We're staying away from, there'd been a question, will the city get involved in lean properties and do those kinds of things? And we're, we're not going to be doing that. We, we had it complete within our contract, all that responsibility is on Republic. The city doesn't make a dime off of this pro, off of this program. So they handle all of that. We've probably, we, we have seen a, a cleanup on our streets already. We still have a handful where we have folks that are just dumping it out. And then we handle those types of things through an administrative citation process, the same way if your, your community service officer comes through and anybody that would have a trash accumulation, whether you have a service or not, they would be ticketed for, or at least our, our process works, you know, with the verbal and then a door hanger and then a ticket and then that kind of thing. So that's how we've been handling that.
Thank you.
Good question.
Did you do any community outreach beforehand?
So, as my mayor is fond of saying, we've been talking about doing this for 10 years, on and off in, in various meetings. We had, beyond just the, the kind of the written outreach which I mentioned earlier, we also had two open houses that we hosted at the city where the contractor, we'd made the, the, accepted the bid from Republic at that point. We hadn't quite negotiated the final details of the contract, but we had the contract or the Republic come in and attend those open houses so folks could come in and ask questions about their service, what, what size is, they had all those kinds of questions like that. So we had, we had a couple of those and then, but as far as soliciting, say, comments or opinion as to whether or not to go that route with the service or not, as I said, the council, they'd been talking about it for so long, they were just like, you know, "We want to do this, we know this would be good for our city." Most of the folks that they talked to were in favor of it. And at that point, they didn't see the point in, in having additional public meetings to get more comment. I think we kind of decided what we'll hear is everything across the board. And so you have to make a decision as a council, is this right for your city? Do you support it? Do you want to move forward? And they decided, yeah. And then, and then it was an education process after that. And we continue to do the education process. We're making a big push on recycling next month. We have about 50% participation on the recycling. We were, our goal is to get up to 80%. 50% is not bad for a rollout right off the bat. We're actually pretty happy with the number of folks that have signed up for recycling, especially considering how few people were recycling in Sheridan prior to this. So I think we're at 52% recycling. If we can get it up to 80% recycling and maintain our same tonnage, I think that we would, what were they saying? We would get to a 25% diversion rate and the state average is about 12. So those are our goals right now. And if we can get there by the end of the year, that, that would be fantastic. Again, it's just education and continually getting the word out there. We have it built into our contract that Republic is required to, to provide these, the, the communication out there, the outreach to the citizens in English and Spanish to put out notices, to do, I guess you call them public service announcements about different things like that. So we're seeing a, a fairly constant stream of educational materials coming from the city and from Republic on that. So we're, we're, we're trying to weather our, our bumpy first year and get out as much info as we can. It's starting to help. Our phone call volume has dropped significantly. The first, the first two months were, were hell. Really dropped off. And then we had a bill come out and it spiked and then it dropped off again. So it, it's going fairly well right now. And in speaking with, actually, some of the drivers, our community service officers were out following around, making sure things were working okay. And they, their opinion was that it was one of the best rollouts that they'd done in a while. So again, I spelt we rushed it a little. More communication, more education and more time to get people to sign up is, is key, I think. We gave them about three months. And I think I would have stretched it to six and let people have six months to decide what level of service would work for them, get their orders in. And then they can actually order the carts and turn them around fairly quickly. It's about a two-week turnover for us. For someone your size, you know, it might be more like a month to get the carts ordered. Oh, and make sure that you want to own the carts if you decide to go with the cart service right in into your contract, that at the end of the, at the end of your contract, that the city will own the carts. That way, if you decide to bid it out again, that's not, that's not another cost you have to incur to purchase all new carts again. If you go, say, you were with, with, ah, can't talk. If you were with Republic, you decided, you bid it out and you're going to, now I'm going to contract with Waste, well now you got to switch all those carts out and you got to buy them all again. Make sure you buy, you own the carts, it gets rolled into the cost of the service. At the end of your contract, the city owns the carts and then that's a, a cost that doesn't have to be accommodated in your, in your next contract.
So the, the home doesn't own?
No, no, the city owns it. We own all of our carts or will at the end of our contract. The carts are individually numbered, so they can go by, they can punch a number of that card in and tell you what address and what customer it belongs to. So, but, but we own them. The city owns them and they just say City of Sheridan on them, they don't say, I think they have a small Republic logo, but it's nothing, nothing too big. So at the end of the contract, we decide, hey, Waste Management's coming in with a great bid and we're going to go with them, we can still use those carts.
Did you negotiate any additional benefits? For example, a electronic recycling?
Yeah.
Or, you know, the, the oil drop-off shred events, stuff like that?
Yeah, we did. And, and e-recycling is a great example of that. How many a year are you going to have? In, in e-recycling, it's a little bit different in that the deal we worked out with Republic, they'll cover up to, I want to say it's $2,000 of the initial cost of the event. And then if there's anything above that, the city's responsible or we split it with them, I can't recall. But those are things that you can negotiate. You can negotiate how many times a year you have bulk pickup events? How many times a year you have yard waste events? E-recycling? We, one of the things that was important to our council was that we include a curbside service for folks who are physically unable to move the carts between their residence and the curb. All they have to do is call up Republic and say, hey, you know, "I'm disabled, I don't have the physical ability to do that." And the drivers will make note of that and then as long as they aren't, as long as their carts aren't inside the house or inside a garage or in a fence or something, they're out where the drivers can get them, the drivers will go and get them, wheel them down, empty them and then wheel them back up for folks. So that was a provision that was important because we have a fairly large senior population trouble with some of the larger carts. And then negotiating your, negotiating your level of service costs and where they come back and propose, hey, for a 96 gallon, we're proposing this, for a 64 gallon, for a 32 gallon for this, that's up for negotiation as well. And lots of moving parts as to how do you handle administrative fees that go with that with us, with billing getting rolled into it. So those, there was quite a bit of moving parts with that. You can also, again, on the recycling, say you want mandatory diversion to certain, I forget how, they have to take it to a MRF where they have to use a certified recycler. You can't just go to Joe's Recycling and dump your stuff. You have to, they have to use a, I, I don't remember the language right now, but.
Mount Sheridan, right?
What's that?
Mount Sheridan.
Right, yeah, yeah. They have to go over there. But all of those things are, are pretty much up for negotiation on that, those services. And that's one of the things to think about going in and knowing beforehand and, and even including it in your RFP when you're looking at a scope of services, saying, "We know we want these, this level of service, can you even provide it?" So that's again where I think the consultant was helpful in us thinking through all of those things that we wouldn't have maybe thought of ourself, those levels of, what, what service provisions do you want included in this?
Randy?
I'm afraid I have a bit of a naive question. You mentioned trash sharing. Is, is that sort of the trash equivalent of pirating your neighbor's cable?
Yep.
Okay, so the people, it's fair to say that the people that were most upset about this is people who were essentially skirting the law to begin with?
There was, I wouldn't say most, but there was quite a few. Yeah. And, and the way we qualified it is as of a theft of service. And that's the way folks look at that. We actually had somebody come into a city council meeting and say, they lived right on the border, our north border with Denver, and they say, "Oh, I, I go and throw it across the street in Denver because it's free there." And my police chief leaned over and goes, "Did she just admit to theft of service in a public meeting?" And she said, "Yes, she did."
You said most of the people do that? What did you say?
No, no, no. I, I said there was a, that we have pockets of folks that were all sharing trash services. And you know what they, what they would do is that they'd play the game, just like other folks would play the game as far as they'd get a cut rate service, would come through and offer them a, a great deal for a year. They'd take it and the, the cut rate deal would be, you know, 10, 12 bucks a month, all you can throw, all you can throw. And so all their neighbors around there would come and bring all their trash and dump it over in front of the one and that company would just come and pick it all up. They usually then would see a spike in their, in their, in their bill after six months or a year and then they'd wait or, or they'd go to the next kind of Joe's Trash Service and say, "Hey, these guys just raised my rate, do you want to cut me a better deal?" And they'd say, "Sure." And the cycle would continue. So this prevents that type of, there's, we have a minimum charge. The minimum charge that somebody has to, the minimum fee that someone has to participate in is $6 a month. That's our minimum. And that, what that provides is what's called a trash buster service. It's a 32 gallon can that's collected every other week. You still get everything else that goes along with that, all the yard waste, all the bulk pickups, all the, you can get a 32 gallon can and then you can get a 96 gallon recycling container for free. So, but you have to have some level, you got to draw, where's your minimum participation going to be? And, and again, that's negotiated with whoever your contractor is, they look at, at what they need to, to cover their costs there as well and, and, and then you work that piece out with them.
Thank you.
Questions, council?
So sometimes fuel prices skyrocket.
Yes.
Temporarily or longer. Is that in your contract too?
It's a great question. We had, and I should say, I think I mentioned we had six or seven letters of intent to bid. We ended up actually with only three bids, one of which I didn't consider to be responsive, so we did not consider it. We had, so we ended up with bid from Republic Services and Waste Management, which is, I was hoping that those two would be in there. Republic Services in their proposal did not include a, a, a fuel cost escalator. They said, "We recognize that there are these spikes up and down, they would eat that cost if there was those types of fluctuations." Waste Management was proposing a, a fuel cost component to the, to the cost of service. So that was one of the factors that led our council to also select Republic. And that's again, that's a good negotiation point and will affect your bottom line on your, on your service, cost of service levels if you include that or not. Especially if you're looking at including some, trying to get some price stability in there. I think it's important that you tell them, "Look, we're not going to, you're going to have to eat the cost of gas. If it spikes, that's part of your cost of doing business. It's a part of everybody else's cost of doing business and it shouldn't be passed along to our customers."
Any other questions of Devin, council? Devin? Thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Oh, you're welcome.
And Michael Oshie, at least.
No worries, I'll get him, I'll get him in front of my council here.
Now he owes me plenty.
I'd love to stick ground for urban renewal and discretionary spending because I love those topics, but.
Before we move to urban renewal discussion, looking for a sentiment of council to make some direction to staff to take a look at the possibilities. I think we have about 10,000 residences is my recollection, somewhere in there. I'm not sure how many are covered by multifamily, so it's a little bit different element with regard to scale, so it may be more than one or something like that. But what is sentiment? Go ahead and have staff take a look at it and come back with a next step possibilities. Jerry's a no. Randy, Deb, yes. Bruce, yes? Maybe?
I'm not convinced. There's members involved in all that. Maybe, they all say yes to give us some idea of what would cost, but I'm not convinced that this would.
I think part of it is going to be, you know, where's the price points? If that's, if that's your biggest issue is going to be, but we're not going to know that unless a little more work is done. I know we've all talked about possibly having a little less wear and tear on the, on the streets would be something that would be desirable, so I think there's a, a yes for the moment, so. Thank you again, Devin.
Thank you all.
So Bruce was a yes.
Yes.
Thank you, you're a yes or no?
You're a yes or no?
This was not a vote, so she could be, she was like.
We went around and gave our decisions. I'd like to know what everybody's decision is.
So for doing this, I'd like to have some estimates too of how much we might save wear and tear on streets over some kind of period of time. And I, I don't know at what point we might be able to use our social media to get some input from citizens before we bring something forward too. I mean, just to get a feel so we, you know, if we get overwhelming.
What, six, one? At the mo, at the moment to take a, take a look at the next step, which is what would be involved to go through. This is using outside, not municipalizing at this stage, but using existing commercial services for the residences. Okay, thank you.
So clarify, so are we, you're going to be looking at some of the various options, not just the one we talked about?
Nope. All I'll look at is this. You guys?
Just this?
Correct.
Okay. Well, actually, Devin, I might oppose it, so. Because I'm, I like the idea of the districts that people bid on.
Well, that's, that's this.
No?
Yeah. They went with one just because of the size of the community, you would probably look at having multiple providers.
Okay, so that's, okay.
That's all part of the detail of it.
We're not approving this, we're approving you moving forward with some more.
Yeah, the, the concept here is we're just looking at limiting the number of service providers. And potentially saving the customer money in some cases, and it sounds like in other cases they might have to pay. And as council member Cole pointed out, limiting the wear and tear on the streets.
We have a nice list of theirs. So at this point in time, want to invite Jim Reese and Jim Taylor, take a seat at the table. And council, at least as far as our tentative calendar is concerned, on November 4th, we will be seeing policy documents with regard to urban renewal areas, one being Columbine Square and. to urban renewal areas, one being Columbine Square and the other being the Santa Fe Corridor. And-
What day is this?
November fourth, election day, is based on our tentative calendar. And to make sure that we're clear in what our role will be at that point in time, and what we'll be seeing at that point in time, we've invited Jim and Jim to help clarify that. So, tonight is not what we will be seeing, but clarifying any questions that we may have with process and where we would stay at that point in time. Is that a-
Just a point of order on November fourth. We've talked in the past that we are all creatures of the political process, and some of this invest heavily in each of the elections, and that perhaps that's an opportunity for us to be involved in the outcomes of what may have been months of work for different people. So, I'm really questioning whether we want to have a council meeting on November fourth, which would preclude any member of council from being able to continue to participate in what they may have been participating up to that point.
Actually, at this point in time, Bruce, you know, we're still scheduled to get started at six-thirty, and my recollection, taking a look at the tentative calendar, was this was the only thing we had.
Okay. Something like that's fine with me. I just want to make sure we get a little freedom at the-
I think we want to keep it lean, otherwise. Yes, hear you.
Okay. This is going to be decidedly low-tech and interactive. I think what Mike wanted me to do tonight was basically kind of bring you up to speed as to where we are in the process, and then also who's kind of responsible for what going forward here, between lift board, council, and how we actually make everything kind of come together. So, I think you probably remember, I think Ann Ricker provided these to you guys a long time ago in the very beginning when we started this thing, which would have been back in what, February maybe, or March timeframe? So, I'm going to go back to that, and then I'll also have the project schedule for the first two that we're working on right now, the Santa Fe and Columbine. And I can tell you where we are in that process, and kind of where we go from here. Okay? So, on the sheets that you were given, there was a very first page that basically talks about your renewal authority at the top, and it has the process that we're going through. This first page is pretty well complete for actually all four of the areas that we're working on. This is really the part that gets you from setting the survey area all the way to finally setting the boundaries of what the urban renewal district is going to be. And the board has gone through a number of gyrations to get to this point, set some criteria. The size of the urban renewal areas were big, and through some of the criteria the board set, such as take out any single-family owner-occupied homes, take out publicly-owned property that's open space, churches, land owned by the housing authority. So, the areas shrunk a lot, and you're going to see that as part of the presentation when you, when you want to get the plan. Important to point out here, though, that, again, back to the roles and responsibilities, the board is only making recommendations at this point. Up until you guys, the council actually approves the plan, the relationship is kind of like planning, planning board. The urban renewal authority is really making recommendations to you, and then you make the final decisions. After that, then the authority basically is in charge of implementing the plan. So, that's kind of the fine line, a little bit of difference between how a planning board would work. So, that's where we are as far as finding, we've got all the blight studies completed, the board's reviewed them, and has approved them as having findings of blight for all four areas. On the next page, this is the part where we actually develop the plan. And this is a lot of analysis work that's being done by Ricker Cunningham, the consultant team. And again, this is all complete for Santa Fe and Columbine. We've got the plan, all right?
Just getting rid of the squeak on this table.
Yeah. We got the plan completed for Santa Fe and Columbine, and it's been through planning board. And so, that one is about ready to come, and that's the one we're talking about bringing forth on November the fourth. In the meantime, between now and then, we have some work to do with some of the other taxing entities. The statute only requires that you create a impact report for the county. But the board decided they wanted impact reports, these are economic impact reports, for all four taxing, property taxing entities. So, that's South Suburban, Arapahoe County, Littleton Public Schools, and Urban Drainage. And so, we've had, we've had reports prepared, we've had initial meetings with all four entities, and talked about, you know, what are your concerns? You know, do you have any impacts that you really need us to address, that type of thing? And so, we're really kind of going back and forth on that right now. And I don't have any specifics to tell you as far as what the final split might be. That may take quite a bit of time. So, that's where we are as far as that process is concerned. The other ones, I guess, you know, Littleton Boulevard and Broadway are still in that process. So, the next step there will be for those two plans to go to a public meeting, and the plans themselves will actually be presented at a public meeting, so we can get feedback on the plans themselves. And then the plans will go to the lift board, hopefully October twentieth, I believe, is our next meeting. And the lift board will hopefully endorse the plans at that point. So, they're kind of following along. We think that the Littleton Boulevard and Broadway will reach council by December second is what we're shooting for. I didn't put a schedule together for that right now, because they fluctuate. And depending on how we, how things go with our discussions with some of the taxing entities, the dates could slide a little bit. But our goal is to get this done in December.
And on this, Jim, just to clarify a little bit, I mean, stakeholder engagement, I know that there's been folks from across the city that have provided input, but the primary piece that is at this stage, which is the property owners themselves.
Right. So, that's where we are in the process. So, before we can take the plan to city council, we have to send out notification to every property owner and every business owner that's affected within the boundaries that are being proposed. We had a little bit of a setback, as we thought we were going to actually come to the board in October the twenty-first. So, we sent out postcards, and the day that we sent out the postcards for that date, we got correspondence backs from Littleton Public Schools saying that they couldn't address the issue until the twenty-third on their board. So, that kind of threw us back. So, if any of you got postcards or read the notice that was in the paper, it's wrong. We'll be correcting that, and there'll be new postcards being sent out, probably yet this week, that will say it'll be the fourth of November. Of course, that depends if you guys concur with that, hopefully. So, that's where we are in the process, but unfortunately, it was, you know, just bad timing. But we had to send the postcards out to meet the thirty-day deadline, when we thought it was going to be the twenty-first. So, we'll do it again. And hopefully, you don't have anybody show up on the twenty-first thinking we're doing an urban renewal plan. We'll try to avoid that. So, yeah, so the thirty-day notice has to go out. Thirty-day notice has to be provided in the newspaper as well, and also to the county. So, Arapahoe County gets notified, and, well, they're going to have, obviously, more than that now, because we've already provided them with the impact report. And Jim has met with one of the commissioners. We hope to have time in front of all the commissioners here soon. And they have time to respond to that, so they can come back and say, "You know, we saw your impact report." And I'll be frank, I mean, an impact report to the county doesn't show a whole heck of a lot, because it's with, the plans are all within the city limits. So, most of the services are being provided by the city. And, you know, will the county come back and, you know, ask for some compensation regarding social services and the jails and stuff like, maybe. You know, those things, you know, appraiser, you know, professor's office, those kind of things. So, we may have some discussion about that. But, you know, everything else, all the other services are city-provided. So, that's kind of the process that's remaining. So, when we come in front of council, we'll have a recommendation to find, there'll be a resolution that will be written out, and we'll have all these findings that council has to make in order to designate an area as an urban renewal area. The main one, of course, is a finding of blight. So, I think everybody here is pretty well-versed in what those eleven factors are, and all, both of these have found either ten or eleven of those factors. Our consultant will present it again, just like she presented it to the lift board, and will go through every one of the factors that have been found, and then you basically make the determination whether or not you think the finding of blight is justified.
And in this context, finding of blight is actually a technical term that means it's then eligible for urban renewal financing.
Right. So, that's the whole goal here. It really is. I mean, to be able to have that tool of tax increment financing available for use to encourage property owners to basically fix up their properties, do some of the redevelopment work, generate the increment, so that we can apply it to doing all the qualified improvements.
We keep emphasizing all the time that urban renewal is a financing mechanism. It's not out there to take people's property or to try to assemble parcels of property. That's not our objective. That's somebody else is going to be doing that. But we are financing to fill in the gaps for the public infrastructure that usually has to be done to follow city codes. The developer may come along and say, "I've got enough money to do my project, but because I have to do X, Y, and Z to conform with all the city codes, I need just a little bit of help." And that's where the urban renewal can come in. We are a last-in financing gap for developments.
So, following along with that, the last page of your chart that only has one column, this one? You have that? Is your chart different than mine? Maybe it is.
You have three pages.
Says urban renewal authority on it, and the first box would be established priorities? That one? Okay, that column, this is what happens after the plan is approved. Got that? Okay. So, what happens after the plan is approved magically doesn't just happen. We have to go out and hopefully solicit development, and hopefully we can get the property owners that are interested in this, and I've had several calls, by the way, and I'm sure you probably have too, of people that are thinking, "Well, hey, I could do something with this tool." And so, we're hoping that we can get the few started right away. And how we do that basically is when we find someone that's actually interested in doing it, we will negotiate, we being lift, we'll negotiate what we call development or redevelopment agreements. And those really spell out what improvements are going to be made by the individual property owner or by the developer, or even lift could actually do some of the improvements too. And how much money we're talking about here. And so, in order to determine, you have two, basically two different paths here. One is you have to come up with qualified improvements, and you have an estimate, a cost estimate, an engineer's estimate of what those costs could be. And on the other part of that, you have the developer's spreadsheet, the developer's pro forma, that basically shows the need. And so, we have to look at both of those, because, you know, it may have all these great things that qualify, but if at the end of the day I run through the spread, the developer spreadsheet, and I look at his return on investment, and the bottom line says he's making a thirty percent return on investment, then he doesn't need us. You know, we're not here to give him a windfall. We're here to fill a gap, as Jim said. And so, if we find that the project is just not financially viable, that an owner or developer is just not going to make a reasonable profit, then it's not going to happen. So, we're there to step in to try to make, fill that gap.
I've gotten this question from a couple of people about that portion between the approval and kind of the developer interest being generated, and then, then kind of, I don't know, where you start to get to the point where you start to select one. We've been doing a number of exercises, I think we've done three different exercises on visioning for what we would like to see in some of these areas, in terms of what we feel is a community need. So, where, where does that come in into the place where the developers start nosing around?
It's a good question. The board, working with council's direction, can establish criteria. Can even establish design standards, if you want, for exactly what the development, you know, you don't want to dictate it too much, otherwise it's not going to get, you know, you're going to scare people away. But you can't control it, and you can kind of set parameters as to what's going to have to be addressed in order to get the tax increment funds. You know, that's the hammer here. You want the tax increment funds, then there's a certain level of quality and certain little thing that we want. You know, some, some authorities say, "Hey, public art's a big thing. We want you to include X percent of your project for public art." You can, you can do things like that.
In your experience, are developers becoming more open to and almost asking for that type of input in order to get into a situation where they're actually doing what a community wants and not going upstream with the community?
No, I wouldn't say that. I mean, they're in it to make a profit. So, you know, if you have to, you want to develop-
I don't mean on the park thing. I mean, just maybe, you know-
A certain level of quality?
-X amount of housing, and we'd like to see this type of a commercial establishment. I mean, if we start, if we, if we define it more clearly for them, it's not-
There's a lot of back and forth here.
Okay.
Okay. So, you know, we can throw our things on the table, they'll throw where they want to be at the table. And you go back and forth and negotiate, so hopefully you meet in the middle somewhere.
The first, the question that comes up in, you know, the subset to that is, from my perspective, there's a couple of things. One is, you know, when we have those conversations with the county, I'd like to see an open mind, at least my conversations with some of the commissioners, in taking a look at the portfolio of properties that exist within the city, and what the city has been doing on its own. So, it's not project by project, but what we've been doing overall. So, it's not a narrow conversation, just dealing with, with that. Because we've, the city has done a number of things as far as sales tax sharing with property owners that are, they're improving it. So, it's not necessarily the property tax TIF, that's the typical TIF, but it's a sales tax TIF that we've been involved in, and the county hasn't participated, nor has the school district participated in any of that. But we've done some things, and so, you know, there should be some at least level of credit around, around that, or least recognition. But the other part is, once it gets to the RFP, knowing that the primary role is, is going to be through the authority, but the give and take, at least from my perspective, would like to see, you know, some of what we've done, at least be elements of interest in that, as we start to take a look at, at properties, because this is our opportunity to influence that. I'm going to put a hypothetical out there that's not as real, but if we wanted to say, increasing the amount of parks set aside that might, might be there, or dollars in lieu that might be there, might be something that we would like to see. Where is the opportunity for some of that input, Jim?
Phil, the, the first opportunity for any development or redevelopment is with the property owner itself. If the property owner wants to do something, they're the ones that's got to be convinced that the city's vision of what you want to see there is something that they can live with. And if the property owner then says, "Well, I, I like the vision," or "I don't, but I can't quite put it all together, and have a developer partner." All that's negotiable, and that's all the stuff that we would be doing in our development redevelopment project. But trying to fulfill the city's vision, we've only got so much power that we can do.
It's influence. I understand. It's not a, it's not a, you know, walk away from the table, but an opportunity to actually have some influence in the, in the process.
And ultimately, and again, I want to make sure everybody understands, you know, we're not a land use agency, so any, any, those decisions are still planning board and city council.
Maggie?
So, at what point, if we wanted to establish some architectural or sculpture or-
or other requirements, would we do that?
Typically, we'd do that during the redevelopment agreement. So--
When you--
LIFT would do that, as far as, we, we enter into a redevelopment agreement with a property owner or a developer and say, you know, in exchange for, you know, I'm making out numbers here, you know, $10 million worth of tax increments, we expect a certain level of art to be placed in public places, that kind of thing.
Yeah, but you said you would do that, but early, I mean, just, just now--
LIFT will do that, yes.
But earlier, I thought you said council can establish--
Well, we, yeah, well, we want direction from council. I mean, we went through a little exercise the other, last time I was here, and that gave me a lot of information there. So when we start our negotiations with anybody that's interested in doing a project, you know, we can go back to that list, or if we want to do it again and expand on the list, we could do that.
We will follow the design standards that the city adopts. So if you, if you adopt something that says we want to have public art, a, a percentage of public art of the, of the cost of the project, and, and you do an ordinance or you do to get to that point, we have to follow those mandates whenever we work with--
So we're, we're talking the citywide issues that would then apply, not just for a particular--
It's, it's not going to be just urban renewal, it's going to apply citywide, and that's--
Okay, okay.
But we can also, we can also require developers, property owners, to submit a set of design standards that they want to adhere to, and then, you know, then we can, then we can approve them with the help of the city planning department.
Thank you.
Bruce?
Going to ask a handful of questions, time permitting, in deference to due diligence as far as liaison is concerned, because I've heard a lot of stuff at the meetings. And then I've been trying to convey some of that stuff back to council, but since this is a working session, I wanted to go just a little bit deeper on a couple of the technical parameters, not saying we haven't seen any of the plans yet, council--
Council.
Right, so I, this is sort of preparatory to that, and I don't think I'm going out of bounds from any quasi judicial perspective. All right. The, in no particular order, if, if I recall correctly, the TIF clock on Santa Fe and Columbine that you guys looked at, and the plan that you're recommending to the planning board and to us, starts with the adoption of the plan by council, if memory serves.
Columbine.
Columbine, but not Santa Fe.
What we're going to recommend, again, this is your decision, but what we're recommending is because we've had some interest, a developer interest on the areas by Mineral Station and South, that we start the tax increment clock just on that area.
So the South Santa Fe and the Columbine, but not--
Yeah, well, we've always kind of called the South Santa Fe area. Reason we're doing that, and I think we've discussed this before, is we have 25 years. And so if we start the tax increment clock on the entire area, and we don't do things on the entire area, then, then we may run out of time. By staging it and breaking it up into, I don't know, three, maybe four different areas, we would have to come back, LIFT would have to come back to council to say, okay, you started the clock here immediately when the plan started, which is the south area, but now we want to do this mid area, we want to start the clock here. And so council has to, basically that's an amendment to the plan. So council basically says, okay, we're starting the clock on this piece. So whatever the base is at that particular time is where we start from. So it's conceivable that the base could have jumped up in, you know, a couple of years until you go to the next one. So it's all individually, and everyone has a legal, own legal description in the--
Well, and that's, and, and so that issue is for council to decide ultimately if that's what we want to do.
Right.
That the recommendation you're--
Right.
--going to make is Columbine and, and Santa Fe South, but mid and north may be deferred or no, no representation of the tax base being set.
Exactly. So what we're saying on those is that there'll be no tax increment generated on the area outside of the south at this time.
That's the same thing, Bruce, that Tracy Higgins talked about when she made her presentation of multiple taxing entities within the URA.
No, and I agree with that, I just wanted to make sure that that was--
Yeah, and then to further--
The process was clear.
Further complicate that, I'm talking about property tax here.
Yeah.
If and when we come in with a project that needs sales tax, that's another decision that has to come back to the authority, to the board.
Now, when we move to Broadway for the sake of an argument, and we talked about this a little bit at the end of the, in the LIFT meeting a week or so ago, the issue of when it makes sense, what, what's, when does it make sense, and this is, I'm, I'm making a, a statement, not a question per se, but it's, we're going to have to ultimately get clear on when we think collectively it makes sense to start the tax clock, the TIF tax clock, the TIF clock on, for example, Broadway and in particular, King Supers. Because part of that parcel, and, and I think Corey, or you, you were, somebody was going to go back and look at what the assessed value of that was at the point in time that the, the study was conducted, the condition survey versus a plan being adopted versus demolition versus construction versus--
Oh, yeah, I do remember, we talked about that.
Yeah. And, and I think that's, it, it's not entirely clear to me, again, as a statement, but we're going to have to do this collectively, as to what makes the most sense there. Does it make sense, first of all, we need to know what those numbers are in terms of the assessed, you know, what would the bases be at various points in time depending on what we're doing? And does it make sense to maybe do a low base, so there's more available for TIF, or to make it a high base, so there's more available for people like LPS?
Well, that's all determined by the county and the assessor's office.
Well, but--
We have very little control over that.
No, that part I understand, but our ability to decide when to start the clock is the issue.
Right.
Depending, now, what the county's going to do is what the county's going to do. But our, we, we hold the trigger in terms of when the clock starts.
True, yeah. You could do that. So you could, you could delay starting a particular--
Yeah.
--urban renewal district, if you want, tax district, on that parcel if you wanted to.
If we wanted.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, there's other variables, being what's the percentage base of the finance component. I mean, so it's not just the value of the property, I mean, there's other factors that are involved. So it's, part of it's going to be, what is the allowable improvement that needs to be financed?
Oh, sure.
Yeah, it's based on the project.
Sure.
I totally agree, I'm just saying this is, but we won't be to that point when we get the plan. So if the plan on Broadway, for the sake of an argument, and I didn't, I wasn't, it, it's not there yet, because you guys haven't even gotten to that point yet, but the issue of à la South Santa Fe and Columbine, do you want to set, recommend setting, starting the TIF clock when we adopt the plan, or do you want to recommend later?
You're not going to see any recommendation of starting a clock until you have a project.
No, not on South Santa Fe and Columbine.
We have, we have projects pending. There's a major difference because that we have--
And, and Columbine as well, there's the, you know, the abandoned shopping area, we've gotten a lot of discussions about some kind of development. Exactly what that's going to be, I don't know. There's going to be a large housing component, I'm pretty sure. But we know that one's, there's a lot of interest on that.
Columbine and South Santa Fe, I get, but, but I, what I'm, I wanted to just make sure--
No, you have a good point.
Yeah, that, that we clearly understand that the ramifications, and presumably if you guys come back with a recommendation that you don't start the TIF clock until later, and that's part of the plan, that's--
Well, and you, you already have a, an agreement with King Supers on that, that we obviously--
Well, sales--
--that would supersede what we're trying to do.
I'll be clear, we're not going to recommend any--
Okay.
--starting clocks, so I, I don't think there should be any analysis work, because we have no interest right now from developers in that area.
Okay.
So there's, it's not, it's a--
We don't have anything, and, and again, you know, why, why watch time burn off the clock?
No, I totally agree with that, it just wasn't clear from the conversation at the last LIFT meeting.
But, you know, King Supers is a unique situation.
Yes, it is, yeah. There's been a lot of conversation in the LIFT board meetings with respect to particular parcel owners who want to opt their parcels out of the urban renewal area. In one instance, LIFT has acceded to that request, and in two others, it declined the request, deferring to council to make a determination. Can you guys talk a little bit about your thought process broadly, not just in terms of what LIFT is recommending, but just conceptually, the issue we're going to get to deal with when people come in and say, hey, I want my parcel out of the proper, out of the urban renewal area, for whatever reason, I just don't want to be in.
I'm going to defer to the chair.
Well, and I give you what my opinion is and why I vote the way I do, which is not to remove a piece of property out of the proposed urban renewal area. You remove a piece of property, and all of a sudden we need to do some public improvement. So there's undergrounding utilities, whether it's putting in sidewalks, improving the street in front of their business, all of these types of public improvements that benefits the good. And you've got a property owner who says, I don't want to be in. So what do you do? You bring up improvement up to his property, skip it and start again? There is a process, we could include him, but he's opted not to participate. So if he's not, if he's going to receive benefits, he ought to also have the obligation to be part of the group as well. So putting these holes in the urban renewal line, so to speak, is not good public policy in my opinion, and that's why I vote not to remove. And I, I think every individual authority member would have their own reasons for doing that.
But, and they did, they have, I mean, they, they've represented, go ahead Peggy, you want to follow?
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Mm-hmm.
That's a larger question then. If we really hit the jackpot with some developments and money came rolling in, where can that money be used? Can it be used anyplace or just on the properties that are in?
Oh, it's a good question. The funding, any, any tax increment generated within the boundaries of the urban renewal area can be used anywhere in the urban renewal area. So say, for instance--
Not outside, not outside the urban renewal.
Not outside the area. Now, there are circumstances where, say, city planning or traffic engineering or something like that requires an improvement offsite, because it's going to generate, you know, say it's a retail center, it's going to generate traffic, and we need a new signal that's just outside the area, then we can pay for that.
Okay, so I'm going to make sure that I understood, and I think I did. So if we hit the jackpot and we wanted to underground all the electric wires in the city, we couldn't do it with that money. It can only be done for the--
Well, there has to be a nexus. Okay, so we couldn't say, hey, we're going to take the funding from Santa Fe Boulevard over here and say, you know, gee, there's this, you know, there's unique need over here on South Broadway, you can't do that.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I understood that. Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce.
Sure. You've had more experience as well, Jim. Do you want to talk about how this plays out in other areas or other urban renewal areas you've seen? I can't believe this is the first time anybody said I want out.
Um, you know, and it, it, and it really is kind of an individual basis. I've done a lot of projects where they've been developer driven. So basically, it started from the beginning. A developer came in and said, hey, I'd like to form an urban renewal area, are you guys with me on this? And, and these are the reasons why. So that's a no brainer, that's pretty simple. You've got one developer, he gets site control, and you don't have it. I've had some where you've actually had people make a case in front of council, and council agreed to take it out. And then you have this thing that looks like Swiss cheese. And all the problems that Jim mentioned can occur. If you have all these improvements you want to make, and yet developer, developer property owner A over here decides, well, I'm not going to play, but I'm going to improve my property, then there's no increment that helps offset those costs if we went and did public right-of-way improvements.
There's also the scenario that if we removed a piece of property, council can put it back in, because the overall plan that the city has for what that's going to look like, your overall vision may say, we need to include that piece of property. So you actually have the power to put the piece of property back in if we have removed it.
And you were, you've been to some of those meetings, I think the biggest fear with people wanting to be removed is this whole eminent domain thing, which we've addressed again and again and again, to say we're eminent--
Eminent domain, yeah.
Yeah, that we're not going to use it. And this, this council has said, you're not going to use it. So I think that's the biggest fear we keep getting.
It's a tough one.
And I don't know where it's coming from, exactly.
Well, it's, it's, yeah, I'm--
Okay, I do.
--not going to go there, but--
We don't have enough time.
No, but I will say this, though, it's, 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 it's going to be a challenging conversation. And, and the one gentleman came in and, and said, well, you know, you guys have said you're not going to use condemnation, that's great, but what about another council, you know, 10 years from now? And the, and the answer to that is, you know, theoretically, you have to look at the property and the nature of the neighborhood, and is a massive development going to go in to certain areas? You know, in theory, a big development of some sort could go into an ensor, but Littleton Boulevard, for the sake of an argument, or Broadway is probably going to be the onesie twosie kind of thing where people are improving their streetscape, which is the intent. Could, could somebody do something in the future? Sure. But then again, the property owner could decide not to do something down the road that, that he's interested potentially in doing today. So I mean, it cuts both ways. And, you know, all we can do is say what we're going to do, we can't control what other people do in the future, but we're going to hear this argument. And so just people need to be aware that, that that's, that's coming, and, and we have to decide how we're going to address it.
That's really up to the citizens. Every two years, the citizens get an opportunity to put four new council members on.
That's true.
So if they've got council members that are going to do condemnation, then they can replace them with council members that aren't going to do condemnation.
That, that's true, but, but I guess what I'm saying is just the opt-out piece. If somebody comes in and says, I want my property out, we're still going to get to do that. You're absolutely correct.
But, I mean, so the folks around this table have at least a common understanding. Part of the reason for including properties that are adjacent, contiguous in this is it's not going to make sense, and I don't, I haven't found anyone that's against undergrounding utilities. I'll use that as an example. You know, undergrounding utilities, improve streetscape, improve safety, improve long, long-term--
Prairie dogs.
What's that?
Prairie dogs.
Okay. Any human body, maybe?
Voters. On Littleton Boulevard, there are prairie dogs.
Okay, so, but if, if, I'll use Jim's words, which is if there's a, a Swiss cheese approach, you're not going to underground for two blocks and then leave it above ground for half a block, and then go back underground for a, a project. You're going to take it underground. And if it's in the, in the middle of the contiguous pieces, the property owner is, is only going to benefit by the public improvement that occurs in undergrounding that. So that's a, that's an obvious example that, that I have in, in talking with folks to say, hey, there's, there's, there's reasons if you're in the middle of some of what could be a project area, to say, hey, you, you only really stand to gain in this. And for folks to really have, have a good understanding of why that might occur is the public improvement, for the example that I'm using, is undergrounding utilities will benefit.
Or if you're going to do a streetscape project, or the whole front streetscape, that's got to be a benefit to the property owner, but if you're not putting, you know, putting any money into it, that makes a strain on the TIF more.
Bruce?
Just, just to go one, one step deeper, I understand the Swiss cheese issue when it comes to who's paying for it and equality and those kinds of things, but what about the existing right-of-ways? You're not going to modify existing easement right-of-way kinds of things by anything that we're talking about here. So if there is an easement for utilities in the property owner's property who chose to opt out, and we're undergrounding everything, it's still accessible to us as a, as a public utility.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. And everything in the right-of-way is acceptable, accessible, isn't it?
Yeah, so, so really, it's, the focus is really on financial fairness and, and that kind of thing to me.
I think you're right.
Bruce?
Just a couple more, and I'll try to be relatively quick on it. I think you guys touched on this, but go, just to reiterate, we approve the plan with any parameters that you've discussed from the standpoint of, you know, what do you need to do to get tax increment financing, you know, what, what would we prefer, so forth and so on. So we provide the framework-- So we provide the framework and then you guys go out and start, you know, putting the house together. But mechanically, once the plan is in place and you start negotiating the deals with as much latitude as you have, when, how do the, how does any of it, if at all, come back to council from anything other than a land use decision? So if somebody's got to do a rezone to do a project, obviously that, we, we're involved with that, I get that. But if the project is zoned as it is and they come in and they show you the, the economics of a project which appears to fit relative to the plan and you agree that, again, for the sake of an argument, it's a $10 million project that requires a million dollars of, of gap filler for infrastructure from a TIF perspective, you know, everybody signs and they go forward, is there any, there is no at that juncture, any council oversight of that arrangement because we've approved the plan that you're executing?
Right, and so, and by having a separate urban renewal board, you've kind of made that their responsibility. Now, you have one caveat to that, and that is the sales tax. So if we go through the, the pro forma and it says, you know, gee, we need, you know, 1% or we need 2% of the city's sales tax to make this work, bingo, we're back here.
Anytime we look at, actually, sales or property tax, I think we've got to come back to you.
No, not with property tax.
Not with property tax.
Once the plan is approved, the statute is clear on that.
Okay, so it's a straight property tax, TIF deal, Bob's your uncle. But if, if it's a sales tax kind of thing-
Yeah.
Then there's got to be some-
Right.
You know.
And you always have the land use regulations.
Yeah, that, that part, I understand, okay. Then the last thing I want to just reiterate, I guess, apart, we've heard just an awful lot of this comment about how we're diverting taxes from the schools. And I think we've, again, consistently in good faith, tried to explain that once the base is set, the base will go up from an assessment perspective. School taxes will never go below the base, it will automatically increase. And then our expectation for the resolution that we passed last week was, and I believe the way this would work is that since you're, since Lyft will be negotiating the arrangements with respect to the financing attributes of a deal, of a project, whatever it is, that Lyft will then go back and work with the school district, for example, to basically make sure that they get the seat at the table that we promised them they'll have in order to make sure that all the arrangements meet their needs as well as our needs collectively as a partner.
Right, and, and we don't know what that impact will be until we actually see a development plan.
True.
So, you know.
No, that's true, but that's mechanically-
That's, you're right.
Yeah, that's how that's going to work. So they're, they're at the table and this issue of, of us pinching, you know, tax dollars for urban renewal is just, you know, continues to be unfounded myth.
Yeah, and, and the conversation, preliminary conversations we've had with Littleton Public Schools is if there's a housing component to these projects, then we need to work out a deal.
Correct.
And I would go further and, and say that that's true for all the taxing entities.
Correct.
The county, we met with South Suburban today, same conversation, and our commitment was, and our commitment to LPS even prior to the resolution was, it needs to be a win-win. So, yes.
Yeah, I, I'm, I'm using LPS just because they've had the most visibility, but I mean, our intentions have been clear all along, we want to work in concert with, with everybody that, that are stakeholders.
Yep.
All of the aforementioned property tax entities are integral to their value proposition across the community. There's no win in somehow screwing them-
Correct.
-to use a term of art.
And reaction we've been getting from the entities we've talked to has been, you know, we get it that there is no tax to anybody unless we get a project. And so, you know, they've been pretty supportive of that.
Thanks.
Other questions at this stage?
So they will be back on November 4th.
So we'll be back on November 4th, we'll keep that particular agenda skinny.
And you guys can make it very fast if you want to.
I doubt it.
And so, council, we're going to take a, a five-minute break. So it's currently eight o'clock, so at 8:05, if we can reconvene.
Jim, what was, what was the last time you did a fast?
You have policy question two, which was the $25,000 grant question, or the this?
Okay, council, is it okay to go back to question number two, which was policy question? Because we have that in addition to our discussion. Policy question two was, does council support creation of program similar to the Denver PS, you are here, micro arts project? And it was $25,000 from the general fund. So, comment, discussion? Deb?
Well, this was something that I thought would be, in some ways, a response to some of the stuff we hear from the community in terms of, you know, some more art and opportunities that may not be something that the Fine Arts Committee would designate. I think about how we are doing the neighborhood program too, and how we've got these great neighborhood groups coming together and with what, oh gosh, Mark Behrens is doing. And this is another component that could be part of that, because it really is about groups coming together, creating, coming up with an idea, something that might be needed, maybe something fun at a park, or at a playground, or in a part of their community that's a little bit underappreciated, whatever the case. But it stimulates some creative thinking, stimulates some community collaboration, cooperation. So I see it as more than just art. And I think a lot of it would depend on how we put it together, and what we design, how we design it, what it looks like. But it's one of those kind of quality of life things that would actually not come down from us, but would actually come up from the community. So, that's kind of the thinking there. I think it's got a lot of opportunity, a lot of legs and arms. It's not something that is 100% defined, and I think that's good. It needs to have a little organic nature to it, so.
What the city of Golden did in a similar vein is they actually, with citizen input, selected a particular location. And what they did was they selected, I think they refer to it as Miners Alley in Golden, for those folks that have been there. And essentially, on a particular day, they had an artist come and complete a mural on the side of the building. They put out planters, they had a meal for the community and the folks that participated. It was cleanup in alley section of town. And folks really had, it was kind of a community build day. And it was not in a place that was public, not in a particular neighborhood, but, you know, that could be subject to their, and so this is kind of a place mark for something like that project. Bruce?
Was the idea that this would be temporary art, or permanent art?
I think it's, could be either. And...
Yeah, it could be either. In the Denver thing, the Denver proposal...
It could be either. In the Denver proposal, it has both temporary and somewhat permanent. It has to be at least, last at least three, three months or so, and up to whatever.
And then who's gonna be the entity that is receiving the grants and evaluating the grants and issuing the grants based on a match? Who would actually do that?
And that we haven't fleshed out yet. This was a proposal that was brought before council for consideration. Once, if you agree to do that, then we can put together a program behind it.
Well, yeah, and my agreement would be that there'd be, yeah, it could be the Fine Arts Committee, it could be some members of staff also.
It could even be a citizens committee that is created.
I see some potential. And I saw what they did in Pueblo along the river. And it was a, it was a multi-year, huge project, and involved the whole community. And it was very, really very cool, because it was a space that was just gonna be underutilized or misused, but once they formalized it and put some meat into it, some quite interesting, valuable art was done.
No, I was gonna say, are you talking about the art along the riverway?
Yeah, yeah, on the river there, along that one spot.
I know, exactly.
And it's become a fixture of Pueblo.
Okay, is sentiment for council inclusion in the budget? Yes, 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 unanimous, yes. Okay? And so now we move to discretionary. And Mike, if I step on your toes over this, you're gonna facilitate through this a little bit.
I'll try my best.
I'll start with a quick level of summary. What has currently been put aside in the 2015 budget is $64,000 for these discretionary items. Last year, what was allocated was 62,750 comparative. So pretty much if we put something in, we may want to take something out unless it's small. And the requested amount is about two and a half times what we have, which is at 158,600 or so. 156,600. Yes, Deb?
I'd kind of like to have a little bit of a discussion amongst council about our approach to this. And this is something that Councilwoman Stalman has been preaching, I think every year, about parsing out 500 here, 1,000 there, that type of thing. Are we not doing a better service to our community by maybe giving fewer more? And when I look at this list and how big it's gotten, and how it's really almost cumbersome at this point, I mean, we're looking at like five-point type, since 11 by 17s, it's just, it's a lot. And a lot of it is kind of, without trying to be disrespectful, is really very inappropriate for us to be using our citizens, which is we're using tax dollars for. So, I mean, we've, over the years, we've, I think we've culled down from some of the ones that we were just kind of standard rubber stamping, and we've pulled them out, we've made some tough decisions, and we've made some tough choices. And it seems like everybody still stays afloat and still keeps doing their business. I'd just like to maybe think about, is there like a top five that we would be interested in giving 90% of our budget to? Or is that not even something, you know, just throw it out there if council's interested in?
Yeah, I'm not totally opposed to that. The only thing that it does become an issue for those we give to, is if we give them a large dollar amount, and we don't save the next year for some reason, it's a big hit on them. Whereas if we give smaller amounts, and it is citizens money, you're absolutely right, it is less of a hit if we don't fund it again. But I'm not opposed to fewer recipients.
And I would remind council, that budget number is what we put in there for based upon previous. That's, you can make that number whatever it is, you could approve the whole 156,600 if that's what you so choose.
And if I could just point out, this was the first year that we have done it this way. This was an online application. In the past, it's always been a written, handwritten application that was submitted. This was entirely online. So what you're reviewing, what is in the big spreadsheet, is exactly what the applicant put into the, their request. Up here on the screen, what we have is kind of the quick breakdown. So it basically gives the name, what we approved, what was approved last year, what their request is this year. So it's a little bit quicker of a view of what you have in your hands. That's all I have.
Other thoughts around this before we attack it? Some way, shape, or form? Bruce?
I don't know. I actually, what Councilmember Ringman said about sort of the art item, I thought actually was really, was good with respect to a lot of this as well. I mean, a lot of this is, you know, bottoms-up kind of stuff, community services, it's people getting engaged and doing the right things. And I guess, I suppose, I respect your comment about giving more to make a bigger impact. I think if we've got a handful of these things that are asking for, you know, an X amount of dollars, like Interfaith, I think we've given them 20, they've asked for 20. For the sake of the argument, I'm not, I'm just pulling them out as an example, but I mean, I think it's pretty clear that over time, they've done a lot of community service-oriented kind of stuff with that. Do we need to give them more? They'd certainly take it.
Well, look, Doctors Care asked for 15.
Yeah.
Well, and based on what Phil has said about Doctors Care, it sounds like they've had a substantial increase in need over the last year, too.
I was gonna say, Doctors Care is also a portion of the city's portion of the city funds. So I think, I can't remember what the amount was.
I don't, off the top, no.
But it's, it's more than what they're requesting here, so they do get a portion already from us on that.
Meals on Wheels, for example, and then we talked last year, I think about Arapahoe House actually having a positive impact on some of the things that affects, you know, with respect to the police department, that kind of stuff. So I mean, it's a hard thing. It's not like the others aren't viable, or don't do good quality work, you know, all around, but it's, I'm probably more along the lines of, you know, I guess, let's talk about the viability of what we're being asked to give them. And certainly if council wanted to give more to somebody like Interfaith on top of what they're asking for, I mean, it's not like it would go to waste.
Bruce?
Just as one level in the filter, I'm not comfortable giving to a group or an entity that is not specifically focused on Littleton. And there are some there that, I'm sure they were filling out the form in good faith, but they don't help our folks. And I think, I think our tax money needs to absolutely come back into the community, so.
Peggy?
I'd like us to focus on people we gave to in the past, and not look at the others as much as a couple of them might, might be worthwhile. But I think if we focus on the ones that we have been giving to, and maybe consider whether we need to keep giving to those and increase some others, have more conversation on that, I think. Because there are some really significant ones there.
I'd at least like to start there.
Yeah.
Okay, with using a heavy hand on this, putting the weight to those we've given to in the past, which are the, what, bottom 12 or 15?
If you were to, if you were to fund them, you'd be 62,750.
Fund them at last year's request.
So if we, if we changed it and went to maybe this year's request on some of those, so.
Michael's putting in there all their requests for this year to tell you where you'd be at if you were to fund all their full requests.
We gave 350 to Arapahoe County government.
That's the, no, that's the...
Sneakers.
Arapahoe House at 15.
No, Arapahoe.
One above that.
Yes, he's got it.
Yeah.
Kids will get the grants.
It's, that is... College scholarships to senior students in the program, in the...
And I will tell you, that is, Deb can probably vouch for this, that is such a worthy thing. And it's, and it's a small amount where we're asked to give.
Well, and it's also a little peer pressure, too, because...
Oh, yes.
You don't want to be the only city that doesn't. It is a partnership, it's one of those county collaborations that it's worth it.
Michael, the only one you missed was Arapahoe House, should be at 15. Second from the bottom.
Got it. So you're at 80,500 then, if you were to fund all their requests this year entirely?
We already gave, I mean, I think your note here says we're already into Humane Society for 50, right?
60,000. The Humane Society is one that we haven't given to, that hasn't received funding in the past. And this is, this is above and beyond their sheltering of our strays. This would be for spay and neuter programs and dog obedience classes.
And, well, a conversation on that briefly. I reached out to Leslie because they won off us a bit when they had some of these events, "Do you guys want to sponsor this?", and those types of things. And I said, "Listen, we've got this grant program, and I think you need to make an application to that so that when these events and stuff come up, you don't have to won off and you've got..." And what I was hoping would come through, and I did have this conversation with the president of their board, but what I was hoping would come through is a request for the sponsorships that we've done the past two years. The Best in the West Pet Fest at Aspen Grove that coincides with Western Welcome Week, and the, which replaced the Run that they used to do. And then the Wolf and Wine, which is their largest fundraiser of the year. And as a sponsor, we also get some name recognition, and it, these are events that by sponsoring them, it allows them not to spend their money to do it, and the whole thing is a fundraiser. So it's one of those matching fund kind of philosophies I love. So what came through is a completely different scenario. If we wanted to do something, if we wanted to do that again, we could amend it, redesign it, and do what we wanted to do, and not what they've asked. Mike said that would be okay.
You'd be happy, that'd be fine.
So where would you like to start?
Well, let's...
Move to approve 80,000, 80,500.
No, that's not, I don't want, I don't want that yet. I just want, what I want is a, or what I'd like to see is a...
All in favor?
Discussion of those that had different amounts or significantly increased amounts from what we gave last year, just to, just to take a look at those and say, are we comfortable or not with, with those lower ones? So...
Freedom service dogs, no.
So freedom service dogs jumped up from 1,000 to 5,000.
We've never given them their full request amount, is my recollection.
No.
Most of these entities, you've never given their full request to.
Well, and I would also, freedom service dogs, from what I understand, they are in Inglewood, but they are looking to relocate. So they are getting further and further, and I'm not sure that there's a direct relationship to Littleton with them at all.
Yeah, and Inglewood has dedicated, has $5,000 that they've committed to the organization.
They probably have Littleton clients, though.
Well, they claim, total people served by the organization, or the program in the last year was 32, so they've provided 32 dogs.
To every...
Yeah, to all their, that's, that's their entire service area.
I'm okay with 1,000, that's not opposed.
8,000, going, going. Leave that one at 1,000.
For the scholarships, they've requested another $100.
I have no problem with that.
So what's that again?
That's the scholarship for folks that have really gone through a rough part in their lives. I will, I will tell you, someone who was parentless, living with their grandmother, someone who was just new to the country, but, you know, it basically, they have to be nominated by a teacher and another staff person at their school to receive that.
I'm sorry, which one are you on again?
That was, that was just...
It's $100.
It's $100.
Freedom dogs, so what? But next up, well, Sister City actually went down in their request.
Good.
That's, they don't have any...
They don't have to travel this year.
Bossy Dollara.
Gateway.
Gateway was increased by 3,500 up to 5,000.
They ask for that every year.
Yeah, they do.
I'd take them back down to 15.
I would have, respectfully, dis...
Gateway batted women's services?
I mean, those are really, that's, that's tough.
And funding will be used to support services provided to the city of Littleton residents and professionals working in the, in the community. They claim to have served 320 residents last year. Of their total, organization serves about 13,000.
I even put it, on my list, I even put it at 2,000.
Yeah, could we, I'd do 2,500. I don't think we're getting carried away.
I don't, we'll leave it there for now.
Leave it where, leave it where, my one vote.
We put it at 25.
Yeah, 25. So Doctors Care at 15 grand, I'm okay with that. That's very much in the community, very much a great program. Arapahoe House.
Arapahoe House.
Mail health kind of stuff.
We skipped over Meals on Wheels.
That's the same.
They asked for the same amount.
Yep.
I was only gonna cover the ones that were different.
I think Arapahoe House is good, and I think the increase is fine.
Okay. Unless someone objects, we'll leave it at that.
I think that the need is represented there.
I'm okay with 15.
And, okay, so we went through that list. One I would like us to consider is Love Inc. of Littleton.
We haven't, Rock him out in Stroud.
300 bucks they increased.
That's fine.
I'm gonna just talk about one that's on the, so it's line 10, is Love Inc. of Littleton. We now have two churches that are part of this coalition that are willing to take homeless overnight, and that's part of what this program supports. They're first time asking for us, but they actually do participate in the city. And homeless is an issue. I'd like to think we could maybe hit their, their requested amount this year and see how that goes. We now, but we now have two churches that actually participate in that.
No, we're on Love Inc., I'm sorry.
Yeah, Love Inc.
Yeah, and I'm okay, definitely giving 1,500.
Others? Put it in there.
75,5.
That's where we're at?
Yes. Going once.
Anyone else have an interest in any others?
Okay, we'll put it in there.
75,5.
That's where we're at?
Yes. Going once.
Anyone else have an interest in any others?
I don't know, I'll make the, the comment for it. I wouldn't, I would recuse myself just because I'm actually on the board, but the crab apple...
I'm, let me pitch for it then.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I'm ready to go for 1,500 on that. I think that is something wonderful for the city. It does, that puts a lot of those colorful trees all over the place.
They're looking to do something in conjunction with our 125th, so it's not necessarily recurring.
Oh, I'm, I am a big, huge, full cap, bold no on that. Where's the charity? Where's the nonprofit? Where's the help? Where's the aid?
It's all community identification. It's all, you know, it's all people, it's all volunteers.
Well, I would say that that could be subjective opinion.
You and Charlie.
Quite honestly, I hear more complaints about...
Councilmember Beckman? Give us a voice of sanity.
I think I'm gonna talk about what you just received complaints about. Can, can we do something in kind to fix their signs? Can we get our sign shop to...
Those were designed that way.
That's what they're supposed to look like.
That's what they're supposed to look like. I had the same question three years ago.
Yeah. Never mind.
30 years old, never knew.
Now, a redesign of the signage we could certainly undertake.
I just think, okay, you know, it's something that makes Littleton special, and if we're gonna put signs up, which we all have debate about whether we need more signs and all, couldn't we do something better?
Yes.
For the community's sake, and make it an in-kind contribution, say, "We're gonna help you spiff up your image here in the next, whatever."
Yes, I think they like the sign. You and I probably don't.
Okay, so, then they don't get the help?
So, but if, if we're looking at, like, what some of the issues some people have said, I'd like to go back to the Love Inc. one. If I'm remembering correctly, they're pretty significantly involved in the back-to-school night, which we're not doing anymore. They're, they're doing some significant things, I think. I'd like to maybe crank that up to 2,000 anyway.
But what they've said the funds will be used for is to help start five gap ministries, such as homeless daycare, seniors home repairs, and mentoring and financial counseling.
And what's their total budget?
Their total budget?
1,000.
Yep, 200,000.
But I, I know they're now more active in the city than they've been before, so, with the churches.
We go back to the crab apples?
Let's get resolution on Love Inc.
Yeah.
Why don't you go around the room there?
Two, two.
Two.
Two, two, two.
You're heaven.
Well, what they want to use the money for is a hayride.
No, they want to plant more trees.
No, they do not. Did you read your, you did not read, you didn't...
That's not gonna cost, that's not gonna cost them, well...
They've got it outlined here. Insurance costs 400, renting trailers and tractors 900, buying hay bales 200, speaker system, that's what they're asking the money for.
That, that's...
So then, then, they didn't fill it out correctly.
Well, it's part of the, that's part of the 150-ish, 125. But ultimately, if you're not gonna, if we didn't fund that, their whole idea is to promote the trail and the crab apple thing, and there's probably other ways to do the hayride and do it cheaper. I think ultimately what they exist to do is to put, replace old trees, dead trees, put new trees in.
That's not what it says, that's not what they're saying they're asking the money for.
What they've, what they...
And $2,000 is a lot of money.
Well, go 500. I mean, like I said, I don't know about the hay, I understand what the hayride, hayride deal was, and I think they, we've talked about that in the board meetings. It is a lot of money for a hayride, but it was also part of the whole community celebration kind of thing. But if you're uncomfortable with that, even 500 would help in terms of being able to plant more trees.
I'd say the money from the city, though, is gonna be used for trees, only for trees.
But it says donations are used only for trees, grant monies, which they consider this is a grant money, would be, would be used for the other items.
And you could make a condition of the use of the funds, too.
They're gonna, they're gonna, if you tell them you want to use it for trees.
I go back to, back to kind of a core philosophy. This is not a nonprofit that is providing a service to the community in terms of, of, you know, helping people. And we are already at 75?
76.
6,000.
76. So, and our budget's 64, and...
What do others say? Let's keep this thing moving.
I'm gonna throw $2,000 more at Meals on Wheels, and you've got a much better contribution to the community than... Or they don't need to...
What are we doing?
Peggy? Crab Apples? Crab Apples, Bruce?
I can't vote on it, because I'm...
Recused.
I'm good on 15.
No? You're good on 15, and I'll say no at this point in time.
Comment, can I make a comment? You know, when we do the tree giveaway, put some crab apples out there and let people plant them. I mean, there's a way to stimulate their goals, but just do it a different way.
Crab apples is an option.
All right, next. That's a good idea.
Is there any other pitches for any of these others?
Salvation Army, what's that one doing? To Deb's point about human services?
The fund to be used to provide up to one month's rental assistance to Littleton residents. Client would need to be in danger of eviction and no more than one month behind on their rent. They estimate they serve about 2,000 residents in their total, the total service, or people served by their organizations, a little over 10,000. And they have a budget of about 200,000.
Think they're serving 1,800 Littleton residents?
1,863 is what they claim to be serving for Littleton residents. Granted, that could be 1,863 in the Littleton zip code.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering.
Yeah.
Or in, in a Littleton zip code, which is often the case.
And we also give them the block grant.
Correct. They, they note in here that they get an Arapahoe County Community Development Block grant as well for a total of 20,000.
Anyone stepping forward? No? Closing the issue?
76,000. Going once? All right. We have a few down below we wanted to talk about. These are in-kind requests, which have cost to the community. There's Western Welcome Week, Historic Downtown Littleton Merchants, Littleton Public There's Western Welcome Week, Historic Downtown Littleton Merchants, Littleton Public Schools Foundation, Littleton Rotary Foundation for the Golf Tournament. It should sit straight up above. And the, um, Arapahoe Community, uh, Foundation for Scholarships.
And let me note on these. First, first three are what? Those are just continuation?
These are in-time, in-kind requests. The only expansion among these three is the Downtown Littleton Merchants Association. Historically, you've always provided in-kind services to the block party. What the request here was to, was to all, um, Historic Downtown Littleton Merchants events.
And it was typically around six thousand. Is that right, for the block party?
The, the cost is always, it's kind of. But the request is, is basically to cover all of their events, not just the block party for this year.
So, so I have a question on something else. Since Littleton Public Schools is up there, we have table at the Spirit Dinner.
Yes.
Where is this?
That's the one other sponsorship that wasn't, it wasn't noted on here, but yes, that is your other sponsorship.
So.
That comes out of the council's budget, not, it's not a request from the foundation.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And so these, and then the bottom two are actually historic sponsorships that have just been occurring, and we're curious, council staff.
What are the issues with extending it to the three events, I guess, roughly?
I can speak that out a little bit. I've done some research. Um, actually, I was the only one that was not at the table in April seventeenth of two thousand and twelve, when the chairman of the Hoodlum, Mr. Ranky came before. I took the liberty of watching the tape today, so I wouldn't misspeak. And it's my understanding that, uh, uh, in two thousand and twelve, Hoodlum, as an organization, took over sponsorship from the South Metro Chamber, who had been working with the city collectively in some fashion. And Mr. Ranky made a request for in-kind, which at that time was defined as eight thousand one hundred dollars in the provision of city services, police, fire. I don't have to tell you what that's all about. He also said, and I quote, "We believe that within two years, we can wean ourselves from needing to have any city sponsorships." So, uh, as of two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, his representation was that Hoodlum would no longer need any in-kind sponsorship from the city. So, doing the math pretty quickly, two thousand and fourteen would be the first year after they believed that they would need any sponsorships. Um, uh, it's not in line with their earlier representations that rather than not needing any city sponsorship, they would be seeking to quintuple, if you will, the sponsorship for five events rather than one, I would say. Going with what he'd represented in the past, that I'm not sure why we would be providing any services whatsoever, since they said they wouldn't need them after the first two years.
I'm okay with the in-kind service.
For what? For what?
For the Hoodlum. That's what was being proposed right here. We're looking at.
For all of their events?
They've, they've requested an expansion. Um, historically, you've always done the block party. Now they're requesting, I think, for a total of about five events.
I'm okay with it.
Yeah.
What are the five events?
I can read those. I've got them right here.
Do they have a?
I, I'm not in favor of supporting all of the events. Um, I am, or, you know, financially. For a couple of reasons. One is that we are, um, operating quite an event schedule ourselves. And so I don't feel as though, you know, we need to spread ourselves too thin on that regard. I think that we haven't been asked to do these events in the past because they've been able to handle that financially or however, and they've been able to take care of it. These events are not for charities, for the most part. These events are fun, that, that they fund the Hoodlum group, that then they can pay for their events, which is great. I think this type of thing should be self-supporting. Um, but what I would, I do find it interesting, and I remember the meeting when, um, Greg came down and talked to us about it. This was also at a time when the chamber was working with them, and there were some real issues that were, arose from that. And at that point, we were somewhat concerned about what was going on, and that we kept getting asked for money, and that everything was, when you went there, you had to pay for everything anyway. So, and he did say that, and I think that there was a great deal of pride when he talked about that, and how, um, they wanted to get off, wean themselves away from the support, just in terms of being an independent operator. And I think that, um, it would behoove us, I would, I would, I would go for, um, supporting it this year at the old, like, the six thousand type.
The block party.
The standard block party cost, and let them know that, um, this, you know, we hope that they'll be able to be self-sufficient going forward.
To respond to Councilmember Stallman's request or, or inquiry, um, the, so the events that they, uh, choose or have, have noted here for sponsorship would be the Littleton Block Party, Turkey Leg and Wine Hoedown, a ladies-only sample tour, Zombie Crawl and Pig Roast, Pumpkin Follies and Goat Show, Mardi Gras, and Santa's Magical Village.
Which, I guess I would.
So it'd, it'd be whatever, whatever police, um, fire EMS, or.
Public service.
Sir, public service kind of stuff.
And street cleaning.
Yeah, streets.
I'm probably inclined to do, go with what Deb suggested. The block party's a big event, and I think that's sort of a signature kind of event. I'm totally fine supporting that with all of the city services on an in-kind basis. The other ones are sort of promotional kinds of things that, you know, around Halloween and, you know, I'm not saying they're bad events, but they're all, you know, they're. Their orientation is sort of with respect to Greg's business and promoting downtown generally through the Halloween season, that it's sort of big on anyway. I'm not sure what in-kind services we really need to provide for that stuff.
Well, and let's not forget what we are spending on downtown and what we, you know, we're, we're kind of making a long-term commitment to the improvements, the wayfinding. We talked about the street study. Um, that's probably gonna come back. So, we're making a pretty substantial capital investment in, um, in that, in that part of town. We're not, it's not as though we're not showing our support and, you know, our eagerness to create a healthy downtown.
Going around the.
I just, it's, in, in a way, we're getting a little bit into an operational issue, and it's that proper public safety requires X police officers and X paramedics usually is what we're talking about. And the fire chief and the police chief would have an opinion about what was, what would be appropriate. And when we said we were doing it in kind, it allowed them the flexibility to just make it happen. Now, if we're going to bill for it or have a payment expected for it, there's a whole operational piece here that we're gonna create for the staff.
We track it anyway, so it's a matter of the billing side of it, not necessarily.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, downtown merchants may be a little more, do you really need X number? Can we get it down to Y number? But I think that's a healthy conversation.
If you're comfortable with that, then it's.
All good.
And, and this is all done through the special permit process, as you now know, so.
Currently at the block party only. Uh, Jerry, you said the full thing, Randy? Okay with the block party or not at all?
Is it, well, I mean, we can't commit future councils, but, um, I guess.
Block party for this year, and then, uh, block party, block party, block party, block party. We're okay with block party. Okay?
Are we okay with messaging?
Yes.
A weaning off?
I wrote last, I wrote last year.
Thank you.
Okay.
And then the last, um, well, the, assuming you're, just a short discussion, Western Welcome Week in the stride, you're okay with, with that?
Yeah, the stride.
And so then the other two, um, Councilman McColl pointed out that we do also purchase a table at the LPS banquet.
But in addition to that, we also have the, uh, Littleton Rotary Foundation, which is a golf tournament. Um, historically, we provide, the councils provide out of their council sponsorship, about five hundred dollars. And Arapahoe Community College for their scholarship collection, um, we provide a fifty-nine dollar table and sponsorship.
It looks like the Rotary's asking for a thousand?
Yes.
Instead of five hundred.
Bruce, what does that, as, as a rotarian, what does, what is that money for?
Ultimately, the, the golf tournament, any proceeds become split between, um, South Suburban and the Arapahoe Sheriff's Department. It's a longstanding circumstance, and for the sheriff's department, it basically goes to the Widows and Orphans Fund, you know, that they've had for a long time. It's, it's expanded to do a lot of help with officers who've experienced losses and those kinds of things, but I, I think that's that official title for it.
That's exactly, that's exactly what they noted in here as well.
And then South Suburban uses it for their scholarship.
What scholarship?
For folks that can't afford to use the rec center or the pools.
Just hon- honestly.
On a neat basis.
This is not a deal killer for Rotary. It's just, they're trying to have a participative relationship a little bit with the city, but, um, it's not a deal killer. They have a tremendous opportunity to raise funds, and they do it routinely.
I'd split the difference.
I'm okay with it.
Seventy-five hundred.
Five hundred, five hundred, five hundred. Okay?
Five.
Okay.
We're good.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That was easy.
Sure.
I think.
Last agenda item for this evening is the, uh, outdoor display and.
Can I, just real quick, before we jump off that, do we want to have some reevaluation of the way we did this? The way that, that staff, I mean, Mike, I know it was a, it was a lot of work. Is there, do you have ideas or a recommendation that you would rather see us do this differently in any way, shape, or form? And if so, would council entertain you coming back and discussing that?
Uh, I, I'd be happy to, uh, look at how other peoples, how other communities handle this. For the most part, um, providing tax dollars to, to nonprofits, you kind of have to open it up, um, in, in this manner. So, uh, currently, we're doing it works, but if council's interested in doing it some other way or, or an easier way, I'd be happy to research that.
Certainly, you can, you can look at the others. I, I personally liked having the descriptions all in, uh, several typed pages as opposed to reading through a package of letters.
I don't mind the format. I just wonder about the, the whole process.
The process.
We, we, there were a whole bunch there. We didn't even consider.
Well, one of the, one of the things.
Not sure I would say we didn't consider. We didn't necessarily allocate funds.
Yeah.
Yeah, so we didn't even talk about.
So, I mean, the way you guys have handled some other things, which we don't handle in here, is what percentage of, of this money is relative to their overall budget? What's the, what's the true imp, impact for it? If you remember, your policy directive on this is Littleton residents served first, Littleton red, Littleton businesses, business people served, and then greater Littleton, Arapahoe County area, third. And obviously Douglas, to the extent we have Douglas and Jeffco with Jeffco. Um, so that's how Mike put this together. But, you know, it goes by really quick, the, looking at what the overall budget of the different organizations are, how much are you funding this? It goes to, Councilman Valdez's comment earlier, if you are funding fifty percent of their budget and you decide to change that last year, next year, that's a major impact. The council in other areas, um, and I think, uh, the Humane Society is our prime example, has been very clear that you do not want to be the primary funding source for any of the nonprofits in here. So I do think that there's a level, uh, next level of, of evaluation that the council could do. It would take a lot more time. It would really be a little more intentional about, why are you funding in this amount? How did they use the money last year? Really drilling down into some of that. I realize it is the end of the budget process when we get to this, and to some extent, it's your fun money and your play money. But really realizing that you just spent about eighty thousand dollars, um, and what was the return on that investment? And did it get to the place that you really wanted to get it to? So, why don't, I mean, we have a year to go through this, so why don't we have, uh, Mike and I, over this next period of time, kind of look at some other alternatives? But I do think that there is value in really thinking about, how do you want to allocate this out? Do you want it to be this group that does it? Or do you want to say, "We're gonna allocate eighty thousand dollars, and we're gonna have a citizens' group or a subset of this council or something divvy that out in some other fashion?" And rather than you guys getting into the level of minutia and detail that you do. So, lots of opportunities for improvement in this area. Just a question of ultimately, what do you guys want to do? And if you have ideas over the next year, let us know.
Cool.
Okay, all right. Um, last item, and we'll get you out this evening. So, um, uh, Councilmember Cole had, um, asked about the status of the downtown, um, outside ordinance, merchandise ordinance. We had anticipated that the merchants were gonna use the ordinance and the permit, and we would have some data to return at some time in the, after the summer and the fall to s, provide back to you and say, "Hey, look, um, the merchants used it. It was a great success. They said we would like some more days," or "Three days is enough," or whatever they would say. To date, we have still had zero, um, folks, uh, come and utilize the, the free permit opportunity. And that was available to them starting mid-May of the summer. So, to give you an idea, June, July, August, September, um, we have not had one single application from the merchants out here. So the only data, um, well, let me back up. So, nobody's utilized it.
I thought we had some apply, but we're.
We had people apply for an encroachment permit for railings. Nobody applied for the outdoor merchandise. The railings had no correlation to outdoor merchandise. We denied every single one of those. Not a single one either was a complete application or a valid use of, of the space.
Why do you think there are no, is there any speculation as to why the permits for three-day, you know, the free, three-day use?
I do not have an idea about why.
There's been no communication?
Not from them. Bruce?
I'm, I'm only the messenger on this. Don't, don't shoot me. The, the thought that I heard expressed was, they didn't want to buy, they didn't want to show any buy-in to it whatsoever. They decided as a group that it would be just kind of a, you know, they weren't gonna do it, weren't gonna play the game. You know, so shoot themselves in the foot for the opportunity they had, but that was their tactic.
Yep.
So, can I ask a question? So, do all the merchants belong to Hoodlum?
No.
So, what percentage? I think we had some figure on that.
I do not know.
'Cause one of the, um, merchants that contacted me, and this is not a comment good or bad about why the person didn't know, didn't know when we did that, then found out, and is in a building that doesn't actually directly open, well, he's inside a building, so you go in the building and then, and there. And I, I don't know how he found out. He couldn't continue to put something out there. So I'm, I'm really curious how many people know what the devil is going on and what their options are, and how much is a sub, subset group that is there?
Can't, can't speak to that. Um, so let me back up and remind the council that, uh, what you did, and I think everyone knows, is it was illegal before, um, up until May. It was, it was not enforced, um, which is not an excuse except on, an issue on our end, on, on our code enforcement. And so, rather than start enforcing it blindly, this is where we went to work with the merchants, and obviously, um, as you recall from the public hearing and stuff, there was no issue with the dimensions, anything, except for the three days. And their, their response to our negotiation was it had to be every single day. We said, "That's not acceptable. Give us an alternative. It's gotta be every single day." So, so that's where we ended. So, you have, um, you have created enabling legislation. You have made it very clear that you were willing, post-summer, if people used it, to look at that empirical data and come back in and say, "All right, should we increase it? Should we decrease it? What is it we need to do?" As Councilmember Beckman pointed out, nobody's used it, so you have no data to respond. What has happened during that time is you have had, um, several, uh, businesses come. What has happened during that time is you have had several businesses come down and say that their business is failing because of the council's action. And so what I have before you and what we will walk through here relatively quickly, and you can cruise it on your own, is the sales tax data from basically 10 businesses downtown and the overall downtown. So I'll walk you through the relationship on that. We do not have a overhead for those watching at home, so I will try to verbalize it. The other thing I would mention a little bit in relation to Councilmember Cole's story of the person who didn't know is at the top count of what we are aware of, of people who have actually utilized the public's right of way for the private gain, which is what this is. That's, they are using the public's right of way, which they do not pay rent for, to sell their merchandise for their particular business. It was obviously a public benefit in some respects, which is, I think, why the council approved it in that you create a vitality, visible drive-by for citizens who are people who are driving by. It, it makes it more active on the, on the downtown. But we, at the cap of it, we have 18 businesses that have used the public right of way in, in this fashion in any circumstance. We, we get down to about 12 that actually use it somewhat on a regular basis. What we have provided you here is 10. We started with 14 because some of the businesses had closed, and so we pulled those out. We took a few of them out because their revenues were so small that they weren't providing any sales tax. So they were skewing, skewing the data. So what we ended up with are 10, the 10 businesses here, which include, and I'll speak a little bit to the one in particular that has come down most recently and spoken with you regarding the revenues that are there. You all know, sales tax data is proprietary, so we can't give you any of the proprietary data. What we are doing here on a blind study for you is we are talking about relationship changes between months and between years. And so what I really would like you guys to look at is about the center of your spreadsheets. The first columns at the top are 2012, then we have 2013 in the middle, and we have 2014 in the bottom. If you look at May, now remember, sales tax is paid in the following month for the month that it was actually collected. So what you're really looking at is the percent change in June, July, and August in relation to, we started enforcement on June 1st, which would be the July number that you see here, and then the August number. And then we've got September for 2012, 2013. We will not obviously have it for 14 until October when it's due. I'm going to walk you down, just for, for timing's sake, I'd like you to look at 2014 at the bottom. Let's look at, and I'm going to jump around a little bit here, but let's look at July change and August change. If you, and I'm going to real quickly, primarily because we don't have a visual for this. Business one, down 7% in July, which again is June revenue, which is when we put it in place. August up 6%. Next business, up 56% in July, which again, I'm sorry, in June, and down 43% in July. Next business, down 14%, up 3%. Next one, down 12, down two. Next, next one, down seven, up 24. Down 16, down four for the next one. Down nine, up 22. Not going to belabor it anymore. The point is, it's all over the board. I want you to look down now at the bottom where you see the year, over year, related to the downtown area, year over year, for those same timeframes. The downtown, year over year, was up 4% for July, which again is June. The merchants that we have sampled, which are the 10 that put stuff out, 3% versus the 4%. The August, which is July that you see there, the same merchants are up 3%. And the downtown as a whole, year over year, is down 1%. The, the, the person who had come down and spoken to you about was 20 some percent down year to date, had their very best month ever in August, which would have been the July sales tax since the business opened. And this is somebody who claims they need that outdoor merchandise for that. My point is, and, and I'm not going to read the 2013 and 2012 for those same timeframes, but you can see by looking at the data, it's just the same all over the board. Negative 21%, 11% on business three in 2012. Then you got a negative 9%, a 37% positive for business 12, business six in 2012. It jumps all over the board. It tends to follow relatively close with the down, overall downtown. But our premise and argument is that the, the outdoor merchandise enforcement, if you will, albeit enabling ordinance, but the enforcement of that is not having a substantive impact on any of the businesses in the downtown. There's other variables, whether, what merchandise changes they may have made, what the overall economy is doing. There are other things. When you look at all of this data, it varies month to month and, and day to day and year to year and all of that. So we would, from a staff perspective, say that this is not what is killing or not killing a business. That said, the conversation about whether or not you think the public's, the private businesses should have greater access to the public space, meaning should you increase that three to X, is a policy decision for the council. But there is no empirical data to say that the sales tax, therefore their gross sales in their place of business is affected by our enforcement and of the downtown outdoor merchandise display ordinance. And you can look at any month to month change between 2012, 13, and 14 to see the wide variable that exists. I'd be happy to answer any questions. But I would, I guess, before I answer any questions, I think that this, this data, and, and we do have, but again, we cannot provide it to you, each business. We know which those businesses are. And basically, you know, whether or not, I mean, we would argue whether some of the statements that have been made to the council are accurate based upon the sales tax generate data that we have.
And business one is the same business each?
Correct. Yep. Yep, we obviously didn't. Change, change the name to protect the innocent, if you will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So happy to answer any questions.
Well, this is fantastic. I mean, it actually, I think it shows a reality. And I think that's what we really need to deal in. We can't deal into these one-off emotions or, you know, one, onesies, twosies because we're making broad-based decisions. I think it's, I think it's incredibly unfortunate that they've chosen to not take advantage of the opportunity that, to request these permits. Some of these numbers for them may have been a little bit different if it was that important. And so I think that's quite unfortunate, but that's on them. And this does, this, this right here shows me that what we did was the right thing to do.
I, I do think though that there's a need for more communication. And I don't know what the answer would be because for the 40 years I've watched downtown communication with the downtown merchants with, the city government's always been strained for different reasons. And so this is not going to be a panacea. But we did understand, I think we've learned that not all the merchants are in the downtown Littleton merchants. And so are we in fact getting information to them? Is there something that we should be doing? I know we have intent about trying to make the appearance of downtown Littleton greater in the overall aspect of how people view Littleton. So in that, in that spirit, you know, do we need to get more to what the vision of the downtown is and a greater, the greater discussion and, and all that? I, I don't have the answer on whether they should, we should, should or should not. I'm kind of laissez-faire on it and do no harm. But I just think there's a need for something better than what has led us to this point in communication.
Let me give you an example of the attempt into communication. So I had spoken with Councilmember Beckman. Both of us have a relationship with the.
Brinkman.
Brinkman, sorry. All right, Bruce. I'm looking at you and Bruce just spoke. Getting tired. The, I used to meet with the downtown merchants president on probably a monthly basis. We, we talked and thought it would be valuable to reach out and just have a cup of coffee and talk like adults and, and try to improve. Because a lot of this is, is driven by the leadership in terms of how we work together or don't work together. And the response was, won't meet with you without the full board. Okay, well, we just wanted to talk to you more as a, as a person, but okay, we'll do that. So got a response back and said, well, won't meet, won't meet with you without the board and our attorney, who happens to be your previous city attorney. And at that point, I just begged off and said, that's not how, that's not how we're going to participate in a partnership. We're not there. And so I think it's important for the council to know because I want to make sure, and I will defend the work that the city staff has done to reach out to the downtown merchants. Mike Broton did our negotiations on behalf of us when this ordinance came through. I have full faith in his conversations with the downtown merchants, and you all know him. He's not hard-headed. He doesn't put his back up against the wall and say under no circumstances, no. That statement I gave you earlier about it was 365 or bust. You know, there's, you can't work. There's, there's no response beyond that. And so it's been very frustrating on our side. I think the council continues to show support for the downtown. You approved, or you will legitimately approve the budget, which has substantial dollars for wayfinding and other improvements in the downtown. And our most recent attempt to reach out to the downtown merchants and say, hey, we need to get back on track. We're all in this together, resulted in what I just described. And so I would encourage any or all of you to continue to reach out. But we are really at a standstill because we can't get them to come to the table, just have a cup of coffee. We could follow the president's lead and have a beer. You know, I'm open to that. Could even shoot for a Coors Light if that's what makes people feel good. So I'm not sure that's approved beer at Jake's, but I'll keep, I'll keep doing plugs here.
It's not one of the 36.
Well, they, they need to add it in there. So, but I think, I feel that staff from Joanne to the economic development, the rest of the economic development staff, to Mike, to myself and the others that work in the downtown, whether that's Rebecca and code enforcement and others, we are doing our damnedest to build that relationship and maintain it. And until folks are willing to come to the table, we are sitting where we are at this. And we're not walking away from it. We're continuing to have our hand out and look to have a conversation with them. So encourage you to go ahead and do that. And if you can make some headway, let me know.
And just to add to that, I did have one of the coffees in the downtown.
I want to make a.
Nobody showed up for it when I had the coffee in the downtown. No downtown merchants came up to talk about any issues.
I'd just like to add my observation. First of all, thanks to staff for gathering the information. At least based on the empirical data, it doesn't appear that broadly anyone is being harmed by the ordinance that we, that we put forward. It's unfortunate that folks, if they feel it would be beneficial, are not taking advantage of it. Because then we might be actually flourishing even more. I can appreciate folks and their emotional responses. But that's part of the reason why folks have financial advisors or investment advisors is when you're too close to your own portfolio, you don't always make the best decisions around that. And if anyone wants to have a long discussion about that, I can certainly. I can, I can take them up on that. And, you know, if, you know, as we talk with, with business owners and, you know, just the folks that have come back to us. I mean, there are resources. I mean, we have folks within the city. Denise and her staff and with Joanne and Chris and others are there to help the businesses and get to that point where they can flourish. There's also the Small Business Development Center that's available at the Chamber location. It's not in our downtown, but it's over in Southland. It's not a long distance away. And that comes at no cost in helping folks actually develop a little bit more of a spirit towards, towards marketing in that. I know having had a business and being in a position of either taking advantage of events or kind of shunning them. If you take advantage of the events, you know, good things can happen. If you don't step forward, you're not leveraging those resources that might be available to you. And I think that's, that's unfortunate that, that folks are making those decisions. It seems that within a certain group, you know, this part about, you know, taking their ball and going home and playing with their own ball and not having fun with customers is, is an unfortunate piece. I don't know exactly how to, to change some of that other than to continue to be open and find Denise and her staff to be very pleasant to talk with.
Well, I think, Michael, you said it. You're continuing. It's good. And I know I've been reaching out to a lot of those folks down there too.
Thanks.
And the other is, the city's continuing to invest in downtown. So it's, it's not like we're abandoning the area and going elsewhere. And that's where more of our events have been focused, so.
I was going to ask, or refresh my memory, the issue of the 12 months in advance that came up. Wouldn't the gentleman?
I can speak to that.
Is it still on?
No. No, in fact, we took his advice, if you will. I mean, there were some really positive things that came out of the public hearing, that being to me the most impactful. And I believe it was Councilmember Cole that made the motion to effectively legislate his idea into, into being. So further, just because I remember, further conversation was that we said, you know, this, this three days per month, again, noting that it's added on to, for example, the month of August. There was a sidewalk sale the first Saturday. So each of the members, each of the merchants, had any of them applied for this permit, could have essentially displayed their merchandise each Saturday in the month of August. We already know that maybe August wasn't so bad to begin with. But my recollection was, and we use the term empirical data, we said, let's start with three as a placeholder, noting that it was three plus. And that once we have some, again, to repeat empirical data available, then we'll, we'll relook at it. Maybe we need to add. Maybe it's so fantastically successful that we need to double it. So I was originally really sort of surprised that this came on our agenda because we all know that nobody has even applied for someone. But I'm going to, I'm going to restate that because we do have empirical data and empirical data is right here. And thank you very much for Steph, what must have been a fairly significant expenditure of time and energy for doing that. So we now know, even though the merchants have, and I, and I'm not killing the messenger, Councilmember Beckman, but to paraphrase what you said, that nobody is playing the game. If this is so important, I wouldn't really call it a game. If this was their livelihood and their, their ability to feed their family, I wouldn't call it a game. But they're not. But the city is tracking, as we always do, what's going on. And it seems the game's going pretty well.
And just to make sure I understand, though, so if I'm a merchant and I want to have a sidewalk sale on this Saturday, I can come in and apply for a permit tomorrow?
Correct. Yeah, this is, Councilman Beckman pointed out, this is not about process. This is about where we are, we are holding to get, making a statement. So don't.
No, I just wanted to make sure.
It's free. I told the mayor today when we were talking, I said, if somebody called us and said, would you fill out the form for us? I mean, we want to work and we will, we will continue to work with the downtown merchants. This is, nobody all summer participated in this. So, and council made the decision to, to allow this under limited circumstances with, as Councilmember Stein pointed out, opportunity for expansion. No expansion based on no use unless the council obviously says you want to add some days into it. So, so the original request was, did council have any interest in changing the number of days? Because that's the only point of contention at this point. The facts are, nobody's used the three to date. And we've provided you with the sales tax data, which we believe shows that this has not been an impact to the downtown any more than the multiple variables that hits retail establishments. than the multiple variables that hits retail establishments annually, cyclically. So we can happy, happy to do anything you want.
Well, I don't, I don't feel comfortable making a decision to change the dates, and so much as we haven't seen anything that would change that from, in my mind. But I do, I will say that I think there's a very unfortunate riff that has occurred, and there's a lot of, I don't know if it's misunderstanding or miscommunication, or turf war, I don't know what is, what the core is, I think it's a whole bunch of little things that are culminating, and, you know, we've always been very supportive of our downtown. I've got Aspen Grove in my, my district, and they only wish we could do 10% for them. You know, we talk about the, the benefits of the Western Wilken Week and helping with the police. I mean, they've got to buy our cops and fire when they do trick-or-treat, and they buy all their own candy for that, and nobody is making any money over there doing that. And the merchants actually have gotten into enjoying it, because it's just fun, as opposed to enjoying it because they make money. There's nobody shopping in the stores during that period of time. So there's, there's suffrage everywhere. But, and, and, and we're not doing anything to contribute, and they, and they are, they contribute more than double the sales tax revenue. So it's not, you know, this is about the fact that, that there's an impasse in relationship, and it's unfortunate, because our downtown is beautiful, and it is the envy of cities all over the place. They're trying to make Littleton downtowns in other cities. And we have put a lot of money and staff, including new staff, FTE, in creating the energy and excitement and environment that we hope brings people down and creates all that. So hopefully, at some point, we'll have an opportunity to have a healthier relationship and communication, and move this onward to a joint success.
And the, one thing, the statistician in me would actually be able to take a look at this, and the context of lies, damn lies, and statistics would say that the results this year are even better than previous years.
Yes. Yeah, yeah. Well, and August is a great month for virtually every business. I just, Councilman Brinkman pointed out the amount of sales tax generated, and, and one of the things, I mean, we are, we are talking about hundreds of dollars in each of these businesses. These are not big sales tax generators, but we look at them as it is part of the unique characteristics of what creates a downtown, which is the heart of Littleton, and it's that unique characteristic that not all the communities have. And so we did not, we specifically did not even give you a general total of what we're talking about. I will tell you again, it's single-digit thousands in the cumulative of these 10 businesses, where, but again, this is about the value that those individual proprietary shops bring to what is Littleton. And so we're really, again, continuing to try to work with them and see if we can get them to be successful in their own right. And I would echo the mayor's comments, that we have a great economic development staff that can help the business set up their, you know, their displays set up in their business right. Do they have their cash registers in the next location? When you walk in their business, is it a friendly, welcoming thing? Are their, are their, are their staff welcoming the, the customers who are coming in? I mean, other things that are much, I think, have a much greater impact on whether you make that sale or not, than whether or not you have a table out front of your business. Now, that's my opinion, I'm not a business owner, but I think the data shows it. So without belaboring it more, I'm not hearing or seeing any council member that would like to do anything. I am looking at you, Jerry, I see you. Thanks. Move to adjourn. Mayor?
Okay, council, remember that we do not have a council meeting next Tuesdays. Enjoy yourselves.
No, meet and greet's off.
Have a great evening and have a great Tuesday.
You too. Michael?
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.